Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I proudly call this meeting to order, and I kindly ask our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhart, here. Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kilburg here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Swanson here.
We have a full house tonight, ladies and gentlemen. We begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's only fitting to invite a woman who's celebrating her birthday tomorrow, Alderman Becky Ruby, to please lead us in the pledge.
(laughter) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Becky. Happy birthday. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to invite all of us to pause prior to the meeting to offer a moment of silence and our genuine sympathies for the family of our late police commander, Joe Frega. As all of you probably know, Joe served the United States in the Army and served the city of Geneva for 30 years on the Geneva Police Department. I had the pleasure of visiting with his family this past Saturday, and their family allowed me to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence to honor Joe. Thank you very much. In continuing our series, as it were, with respect to reflections on and tributes to some of America's most significant and some unheralded black leaders, I would like to turn the floor over to our friend Mitch. We have a brief video regarding a moment in our history that most of us weren't around for, but hopefully, most of us know about.
Genius, genius draws no color line. And so it is fitting that Marian Anderson should raise her voice in tribute to the noble Lincoln whom mankind will ever honor. Miss Marian Anderson.
to audiences of four, maybe 5,000 people. That day in April of 1939, she sang to an audience of 75,000 people. She was originally slated to sing somewhere in Washington, DC. She had booked a room at the Constitution Hall, owned by the Daughters of the American Revolution, until that organization said, "No black people can perform on our stage." So they moved that performance outside. They had hundreds of co-sponsors, including the Supreme Court Justice, Justice Black, and many others. You can't quite tell from that video, but the crowd was indeed diverse, old, young, black, white. That song perhaps is her most famous, but when you look at the newsreels regarding that day, it was an extraordinary moment in time, particularly in 1939. And I just thought that was most fitting with respect to not only her accomplishments, but how perhaps for a brief moment in time, our nation came together on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial to honor a woman who was clearly, and at that time stated to be, the voice of a generation and perhaps of multiple generations. So, thank you for the indulgence. Tonight's meeting, ladies and gentlemen, is being conducted semi-virtually in compliance with the Governor's executive order, limiting in-person gatherings to the lesser of 50 people or 50 percent of overall room capacity under Phase Four. For the city of Geneva Council Chamber, this provides for a maximum of 29 individuals who may attend in person. As such, you will note that a few of the Aldermen are attending virtually, and the remainder are here in person. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. This meeting may be viewed via live stream on YouTube, or the public access channel, AT&amp;T Channel 99, or Comcast Channel 10, or by accessing the meeting directly through the link provided on the agenda for tonight's meeting. In addition, public comments may be submitted any time during the meeting by emailing those comments to publiccomment@genova-il.us. Please note, comments received during the meeting will be acknowledged and placed into the record of this meeting, but will not be read aloud during the meeting. Any questions or comments? Onto our items of business, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me. Prior to the offering and accepting a motion and a second on item 3A, I would like to share the following. This item on the agenda, the annexation of property, while this item is related to the next item, item 3B, it is a voluntary annexation requested by the property, and they desire annexation regardless of the outcome of the next item. As such, this item should be considered individually and on its own merits. With that, I'll entertain a motion to put on the floor item 3A. Alderman Burkhart makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. David, is there anything else you want to add regarding this? It's fairly self-explanatory in your memorandum to the council. Anything, Mr. City Attorney, you want to add?
Yes, sir.
The Burton Foundation, any comments or questions regarding same? Questions or comments from the city council? Anyone remotely? Alderman Kilburg, yes, sir.
Just, could you clarify the zoning? Is this a single-family currently then, or has there any zoning been assigned to it at this point in time yet?
We're going to invite Mr. DeGroot to respond.
So, the applicant is not requesting zoning upon annexation, and the zoning ordinance provides that when property is annexed without a specific request, the default district is the RR, rural residential district, so it's the most restrictive single-family zoning district we have.
Anything else, Alderman Kilburg?
Just, as there, this consists of 3.89 acres, and how do you see the future development of this, potentially into the future? If, in fact, we zone it, what would be the more likely options?
There's no plans for development of the parcel at this time. It was secured to provide access to the city-owned parcel, so if it were to develop in the future, we would have to review a proposal at that time.
I was also asked a question if there have been any discussions with the Burton Foundation as to the possibility that this could at some point be zoned R7 and become an expansion or an extension of Emma's Landing. Has there been any exploratory discussion at all with staff in that regard? I didn't believe there has been, but is there anything that the council may not be aware of?
No, there's been no discussions about rezoning that property or expanding the project.
Are you referring, when you say "expanding the project," are you referring to the Burton Foundation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Alderman Kilburg. Anyone else? Questions regarding item 3A, the annexation of the property? Mr. McCready has advised me that there are two people who we believe are prepared to ask a question or make a statement regarding this matter, or Mr. McCready is going to clarify that?
On the annexation.
On the annexation, item 3A.
Yes, for your comments, Mayor, there are several of you online this evening joining us. For those that are online, you can use the Raise Your Hand function to let me know that you wish to address city council or have a question. As the mayor shared with you, the matter at hand, item 3A, is up at this time. If you wish to speak on matter 3A, if you leave your hand raised, I will address you in a moment. And again, this is only for 3A. I'm going to give everyone an opportunity here to adjust if their hand was intended to be raised or not. Mr. Connolly, your hand is raised. I'm going to provide an opportunity for you to unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hi, guys. It was not my intent to comment on the annexation. I apologize. So I'll take my hand down. Is that where we're on right now?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll put my hand down.
Ms. McCall, your hand is currently raised for this item. I will unmute you in just a moment. And you've now been unmuted.
Great, thank you. So, while I understand that the annexation is separate from the Burton Foundation proposal, as we discovered in previous meetings, that land is currently under an option agreement with Jim Bergman for a $690,000 purchase price, where he will receive a tax credit of 50 percent of that value of $345,000. So my question is, though this is separate, and I understand that if, you know, the Burton Foundation, if Emma's Landing doesn't go through, they still want the property annexed, I'm wondering if you can provide me with an understanding of the costs that are associated with annexing land and what that entails for the general public? Because it is of, you know, I think it stands to make a point that, you know, when this land is annexed, there's a significant amount of money being exchanged, and so I'm just wondering what that means for residents. Do we take on the tax burden for annexation? Is it just a simple process? What are the costs associated with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, as a reminder, this is public comment, not a public hearing, so any questions put to the council at this time, frankly, are inappropriate. We're making a record, but it's not a question-and-answer session. The public hearing with respect to the matter is concluded.
Okay, well, since I can't have my questions answered, then I guess that's just something that I'd like the council to consider, and maybe I need to do my research on what those fees are and what happens when land is annexed, but just for the record, that land currently is under an option agreement. Thank you.
This is a voluntary, non-conditional annexation brought forth by the landowner. The conditions that exist between that private landowner and anyone else is not before this council. The only question is, it's contiguous, voluntary, and not conditional.
Mr. McCready?
And again, per the comments that have been shared with us here in the last few moments, if there's public comment, additional public comment on this matter, if your hand is raised, Mr. Rodney Nelson, your hand is currently raised, so if you have public comment on this, I will unmute your microphone momentarily. And again, this pertains only to the matter 3A at this time, public comment. And you are now unmuted. Mr. Nelson, you are still muted on your end. We are unable to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My hand is red, so I didn't have it raised, so I apologize for interrupting your meeting. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Just making one last check here. David Bloomberg, your hand is currently raised. If you have public comment on this matter, I will unmute your microphone. And you're now live.
Yes, hi. I intended to raise my hand for 3B, so apologies for any confusion there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. At this time, Mayor, Mr. Simonian, Mr. Tom Simonian, again, this is for matter 3A for public comment. I want to unmute your microphone now. You've been unmuted.
I don't have my hand raised, it's red.
Okay, we will leave you muted then. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I believe everyone who had a hand raised or unraised has been addressed.
Thank you. Anything on the written comments?
Not in relation to the...
Not in relation to item 3A? Again, any other questions from the council members? If not, we'll take a vote, excuse me, Alderman Casarog.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to questions about this in general, since this is the first hearing, I think, we've heard about this annexation, we've had about this annexation, will there be opportunities maybe at another time for public to comment, or do we normally not allow commentary or questions about annexations from the public?
Generally, on a voluntary annexation without conditions, there's no real objection because it's the landowner that's contiguous to the city voluntarily making their property within the municipal corporate boundaries. There's not really a basis to object to that.
Okay.
It's fully contiguous, it's fully surrounded by the city of Geneva.
I just, I understand that there's not any objections or anything like that. I don't think that's exactly my point. My point is just giving the public the opportunity to ask questions.
To ask questions?
About what that means in general for city government, things like that.
There was a public hearing, Alderman, but...
I'm talking about the annexation specifically.
The lack of commentary, other than tonight, for purposes of a voluntary annexation, there wouldn't be another opportunity because, again, there's nothing to object to.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
So, I'll ask the one question that I thought I heard, which is, what is the cost to the city of annexation?
I mean, other than legal cost to draw up an annexation agreement, that's it?
Thank you.
The applicant is required, do they pay, they put a deposit for that? Sorry, David.
So, in this instance, there was not an annexation agreement. They were, they're just requesting annexation, so there's an application fee, and then, in this case, there's not a hearing because there is no agreement or request for zoning upon annexation. We did notice, we did include the annexation in the notice advertisement for the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearings, so there was, and that was discussed in the staff report too, so, I mean, it was, there was opportunity at those meetings to at least ask questions if they were out there.
Alderman Maladra, you still have the floor? Okay. Alderman Burkhart?
Thank you, Mayor. So, costs would come into play if we ran city services to an annexed piece of property? But they would have to be a development or a reason to run?
Yeah, and again, those could be, those are likely borne by the developer, so I don't want to go too far down that road, because, again, this is just a straight, simple annexation, probably as clean as it gets, because there is nothing else being contemplated at this point.
And because it's surrounded by cities, so we're not...
Correct. It's voluntary, it's surrounded, all of those things.
It's not like when we're talking, if we talk about something where you have to hopscotch something to get water there or electric. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone remotely? Anyone here in the chamber? We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Dawkins, when you're available, please take the roll call.
I can't hear you.
Want you to come back to him.
Okay. Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson? Okay, but we're going to need to get this addressed before. There's a phone number on your meeting invite that you can call in on your phone, so we
We're going to pause just for a moment, folks, until this is rectified. We cannot announce the final vote until it is indeed rectified, so...
He did the thumbs up.
You comfortable with that? Thumbs up is sufficient. City Attorney and City Administrator witnessed that thumbs up, therefore, item 3A has passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero absent. We will pause still for Alderman Swanson to join us, I believe by phone, correct?
You can still show on the screen, but we can hear him audio by phone.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Is this working?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, recommendation of approval of ordinance number 2021-03, allowing for the construction of Emma's Landing, a 45-unit affordable rental townhome subdivision of vacant property, parcel number 12-08-200-073. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Casarog makes the motion?
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the second. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin tonight, I do want to read a few things for everyone's benefit, and if you'll indulge me, I'll be grateful. On Thursday, February 11, 2021, the city of Geneva's Planning and Zoning Commission met to review the established record generated from a previous public hearing regarding the Emma's Landing proposal. The Emma's Landing proposal includes an annexation, which we have unanimously approved, a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary and final plat of subdivision, and final planned unit development plan approval to allow construction of a 45-unit affordable rental townhome development. The public hearing for Emma's Landing was first opened at the January 14, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and was continued to the January 28, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission. Testimony in the form of questions, comments, and documents were provided by the Burton Foundation, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, professional staff of the city of Geneva, and the general public throughout the public hearing just referenced. The public hearing was closed after receiving six and a half hours of testimony and questioning, establishing, therefore, the public record at the conclusion of the January 28, 2021 Planning and Zoning meeting. At the February 11, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, with testimony having been provided, the public hearing closed and a record established, the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated with the relevant testimony as their guide and considered motions to the city council regarding the Burton Foundation's requests. While no further testimony was allowed, public comments were permitted by the Planning and Zoning Commission chairman, albeit said public comments were not to be considered as part of the established record. In addition, no further cross-examination was permitted of the Planning and Zoning Commission members, the Burton Foundation, or city of Geneva professional staff. The February 11, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission was held for the Planning and Zoning Commission members to deliberate and formulate a recommendation to the city council based solely on the established public record ascertained in the official public hearing process held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 14th and the 28th of January 2021. At the outset of the February 11 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Chairman Stocking reminded the Planning and Zoning Commission members, as well as the general public, that the Planning and Zoning Commission has very specific parameters and criteria to consider when reviewing applications and providing recommendations. The Illinois state statutes and Geneva city code allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to carry out the following responsibilities, including, but not limited to, preparing and recommending that the city council changes in the official plan as may be deemed necessary by the council or by the Planning and Zoning Commission, to give aid to the officials of the city charged with the direction of projects for improvements embraced within the official plan, to further the making of such improvements, and generally promote the realization of the official plan, to hear and make recommendations to the city council on applications for special use permits, including planned unit developments, to review and make recommendations to the city council on applications for plats of subdivision, affecting land within the corporate limits of the city, and in contiguous unincorporated territory outside and distant not more than 1.5 miles from such city limits, to review and make recommendations to the city council on applications for variations, and to review the potential impacts a new development may cause regarding, but not limited to, traffic, parking, stormwater, and land use. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not and will not make recommendations to the city council based on any applications, procedures for managing residential occupancies, relationships with other businesses, nor the clientele they desire and may serve. Deliberation amongst and between the Planning and Zoning Commission members ensued, and a vote was taken to advance the Burton Foundation's proposal to develop Emma's Landing. The final vote was six in favor and one against with the following conditions. Number one, the table on the landscape plan shall be revised to state that six trees are required for internal landscaping, and six trees are provided for internal landscaping. I think I just repeated myself, forgive me. Number two, the landscape plan shall be revised to relocate and/or remove the parkway trees shown on the pavement of Emma's Way near its intersection with Lewis Road. No more than two of these three may be removed. Third, and... Third, an affordable housing agreement in accordance with Section 11-16-7 of the zoning ordinance shall be approved by the City Council prior to the building permit being issued by the city. Four, final engineering shall be approved prior to building permit being issued by the city. Five, a backup special service area shall be established to ensure that the city has the ability to maintain the detention area in the event it is not properly maintained by the management company of Emma's Landing. Number six, the applicant shall make a cash contribution of $66,268.13 to the Geneva School District. Number seven, the applicant shall make a cash contribution of $274,725 to the Geneva Park District. Number eight, the landscape plan shall be revised to incorporate a buffer strip along 60% to 65% of the northern property line consisting of trees and shrubs and at least 50% of which will be evergreens and having gaps of no more than 10 feet. Tonight, the City Council is charged with considering only the established public record ascertained at the January 14 and January 28 public hearing. Planning and, excuse me, the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 11 as well. Now, here's how the flow is going to go this evening. We're going to hear some comments by the city attorney. We're going to invite our friends at the Burton Foundation to provide whatever comments they so choose. We will invite anyone from the public, in person or virtually, to also provide comments. We will then invite the City Council to deliberate, allowing the City Council, of course, to ask comments and seek clarification from either the Burton Foundation or professional staff. And then we will take a roll call vote. Anyone have any questions regarding that flow this evening? Anyone virtually? With that, I'd like to turn over to our city attorney, Mr. Sandak, who is going to address three items.
Good evening again. The first item I was asked to address was on Friday, February 5th, 7th, I'm sorry, 19th. The city was served with what I'll, what is called a written protest to the proposed annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval, and final planned unit development plan approval to construct 45 affordable rental townhome units in connection with the Burton Foundation's development proposal for Emma's Landing. This was served on Chuck Radovich, the city attorney, the applicant, and the city clerk. Ostensibly, this protest was filed in an effort to change the voting requirements associated with tonight's item. It does not. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. This, before you tonight, is no rezoning. You are not changing a text, the text of the zoning code, nor a zoning map. As such, the regular voting threshold still maintains. I did have a conversation with the attorney representing the HOA, Mr. Bloomberg, and I advised him of that this evening. For purposes of clarity, I'd like to note that the document served upon the city did have a technical problem with the certificate of service. I'll explain that to Mr. Bloomberg offline. So that's the first item. The second item, you probably heard during the public hearing, many discuss, many people discussing a purported conflict of interest. I wish to be clear that I have asked on numerous intent, occasions, to be advised of what conflict of interest there is. A conflict of interest would occur if a member of the City Council, city staff, were in somehow, some way involved in the actual application in some untoward, unseemly, or unprofessional way. That is not the case. I've heard nothing to actually advance that. Rather, in the public hearings, there were a lot of discussions about the applicant and its relationship with private contractors, which have nothing to do with what we do as a city. So, Mr. Radovich, Mr. Finson, and I scoured the record for any potential conflict of interest, and we were presented with zero evidence of that. Lastly, and it corresponds to number two, at the public hearing, in addition to lots of good comments on stormwater, traffic, landscaping, anything having to do with the building configuration and materials, those are relevant topics, as they are for you, items having to do with who could live in the unit, what happens with, with certain people, is there a management company, what hours they run are entirely inappropriate, immaterial, and frankly unfair. This applicant, like every applicant, must get a fair hearing on the merits of the item before this council, having nothing to do with items that may have, I don't know, some interesting aspects but are inappropriate for this tribunal's adjudication and review. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the council for the city attorney, Mr. Sandak, regarding the statement he just provided? Anyone virtually first? Anyone here in the chamber? Very well. Ladies and gentlemen, item 3B is on the floor. Per the run of show as explained, I invite the Burton Foundation to join us at the podium for any additional comments they'd like to deliver, any information you'd like to share.
Good evening, everyone. Through all of this and the history of the Burton Foundation, we're hopeful that you see our team has worked very closely with city staff, with the city's engineers, the consultants, to create a site plan that will work well for Geneva. This 45-unit community is suitable for new housing. The amenities for the development are playground, upgraded landscaping, with stormwater capturing the rain gardens, small office property manager for its storage for maintenance equipment. The development is estimated to be over $18 million. Because this is affordable housing, it has nothing to do with the build, with the infrastructure. We do everything that a market rate developer does. It's the rent. So I just wanted to ask you if you would please consider the approval of the development for you tonight, and we respectfully ask for your approval from Emma's Landing. We will do everything we can to make sure it stays a very proud community for you to have for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, consistent with what we've outlined earlier and what was not objected to by the council, at this point, public comment is appropriate. I'd like to first ask if anyone joining us here in the chamber has any public comment to share with the council on this particular topic? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Brennan. I live on Cedar Avenue.
Hi, Cheryl.
Across from where Emma's Landing will be. My only concern, again, once again, I'm going to voice it, is stormwater. I have a backyard that every time it rains, I get puddles in my backyard. Can't let my dog bout. He comes back a muddy mess. And I read in the agenda minutes for tonight, the city recognizes there's a problem with stormwater here. They've done a study. They're working to fix it. Let's fix it before we build anything. Let's get it right, people. I don't want my backyard becoming a pool. I don't want my basement filled with water. My husband and I have worked very, very hard to have what we have today. Nothing has ever been handed to us, ever. And I'm upset and I'm angry because through this commission and through the planning and zoning, it's fallen on deaf ears, I feel. Our, our concerns have not been truly recognized or, or even, or I can't even think of the word because I'm so angry. I'm sorry. But if you came to my, my yard after a good rain, I can show you what I'm talking about. I've got a marsh in puddles. I don't know, I, we are low relying, yes, but why would we cause something that could exacerbate the problem? Why? Answer me that. I'm frustrated. This whole process is being rammed romped through, through a pandemic. People, it's a pandemic. Look at how many people are here. We can count on one hand. I've got a father with lung cancer. I shouldn't even be here tonight. That's how angry I am. And you people just want to write us off. We're taxpayers of this city. We lived here. We moved here from Michigan. We chose Geneva because of the community, the beauty, and everything we'd heard. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of this city right now, that you would take your citizens, take people who are raising valid concerns and ignore them. And I think you should be ashamed. I think there's a real ethical and moral issue with something going through during a pandemic when people cannot be here to voice their concerns in full. Thank you.
Mr. McCready? Virtual attendees interested in speaking to item 3B?
For those of us joining, joining online, I can see that several of you do have your hands raised. We did discuss that before, and I will just note that on our end, we can see if a hand has been raised. I think we're all familiar with that function now, that you can raise and lower the hand. It's, it's, it's showing green on this end, so if I do see your hand raised in an abundance of caution, I will recognize you, say your name, and let you know that we're unmuting your microphone. But at this time then, Mayor, I can begin acknowledging those online.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Simonian, I'm going to unmute your microphone. You are showing a green raised hand on our end here, so I will mute and allow you to make your public comment. You're currently muted on your end, but you've been unmuted here for us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I, I must be doing something wrong on my end because I, my hand is red and I have not, I didn't put my hand up. Well, I apologize.
Okay, we will move on to the next public commenter. Mr. Mr. Rodney Nelson, you do show a green hand here. I will unmute your microphone and allow you to make public comment regarding the matter at hand, which is 3B.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My hand was red. I think this highlights, though, that you have really significant problems with your system. And I kind of echo the lady's comments about doing this during a pandemic. You might remember that I was not allowed to cross-examine the applicant at the second session of the public hearing. And apparently, I'm told, it was a technical problem. You're not really having public, the, the, the standard ought to be that everybody has access. Not that a lot of people have access, but that everybody has equal access. And you haven't met that standard. So I would highly recommend that you entertain a motion to table this matter until you can get your system fixed or that, until we can return to a constitutional form of government. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Steve Hernandez, your hand shows raised. I'm going to unmute your microphone at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
City Council, City of Administrators, thank you for taking the time to listen to us today. The purpose of my speaking today, I am the president of the Sterling Manor Townhome Homeowners Association, and I'm representing the group as a whole. But more specifically, the residents that live at 2829, 2827, 2825, 2823, 2809, 2807, 2805, 2803 Caldwell Lane. And the purpose of especially talking about these residents is they do adjoin the pond on Heritage, I'm sorry, on Lewis. And the concern for many obviously has been stormwater and runoff. And while, you know, we did speak with the commission a couple times, there was much discussion on flooding and concerns of water overrunning some of the properties along the line. But these specific Caldwell Lane addresses have a concern, a grave concern. And the question was raised a few weeks ago as to how that was going to be done. And the engineer on behalf of the Burton Foundation gave an explanation and stated that due to having access to the property due to plat of survey allowing utilities, and that that would be a way that they could access our pond to dump water into our pond that we maintain and that we own. So without, you know, we had the attorney on board, so if I mess up anything, he'll definitely clean up some of my verbiage. But I would ask the commission to entertain a motion to table this as we are hiring a engineer to specifically look into the project and how it will impact our community and making sure that it does not change the flood plain, make sure that it doesn't incur a heavier cost on insurance for our residents. So that's, that's where we're at. We would truly appreciate that you would table this until we can gather more information with the most current plans that have been provided to the residents and to our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Ms. McCall, your hand shows as raised. I will unmute you here for public comment on item 3B.
I'm on the.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, so first of all, I, I appreciate Mr. Hernandez speaking on behalf of the HOA. You know, I, my parents live on Caldwell Lane. I live just kitty corner on Peterson Court. When Attorney Sandak commented that a formal protest was filed for the mere purpose of a vote, I took offense to that because, as mentioned, my parents live on Caldwell. They're affected by this. And it wasn't for the pure reason of a vote. It's because the homeowners and the homeowners association are upset, and they're asking for you to table this, for you to think about it before you jump to any conclusions. What I have to say is that, as mentioned, I'm on Peterson Court, and I want to thank the members of City Council who've taken the time to respond to my many emails and my calls regarding the outstanding concerns that I've had. I, like many others, was disappointed by the PZC meeting and the lack of deliberation and the lack of commentary by the commissioners. I was disappointed that we were unable to hear Commissioner Rittenhouse due to the virtual format as I believe he was making some really valid points regarding what is germane, what is not, and why the conflict of interest was not investigated. More importantly, I was saddened by the fact that the Burton Foundation made zero, I repeat, zero concessions when it came to the issues that we have been raising for nearly a year. Had the City of Geneva and the Burton Foundation included residents of Sterling Manor in their initial discussions via a townhome meeting in 2019, you would see that we are very reasonable people. We are intelligent. We come from a variety of different backgrounds, and we have some amazing feedback on how we could bring affordable housing to that parcel of land. I truly believe, had you just spoken to us in 2019, you would not have residents that are so upset and so many people that feel like we've not been part of this process. Rather, we feel like we haven't been heard, and this is being forced upon us during a pandemic. I hope that City Council members were able to read my public comment ahead of tonight's meeting. Since the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, I came across something, a very important document that I submitted for public comment. One of the biggest concerns that we have is the issue of flooding and how the added density of this development will affect surrounding homes. So as mentioned, recently, we gained access to the environmental study that was submitted by the Burton Foundation to IDA, where it was recommended that a second environmental impact study be done due to the six last incidents. If you're not familiar with the word "last," I encourage you to look it up. This occurred on the adjoining parcels of land. So I want to know why this study wasn't submitted to the PZC by the Burton Foundation. And I would like to know if the Burton Foundation has provided us with a Phase 2 of the environmental study if one was completed. And I take that back, I know I'm not allowed to ask questions, so I encourage the City Council to determine if there is a Phase 2 environmental study. So, does the City Council understand that it's your duty to not only potential future residents of Emma's Landing, but to citizens of the property owners in Sterling Manor in downstream subdivisions and properties to fully investigate this before any final approval for the proposed annexation amendment to the comprehensive plan and other rezoning amendments is given? I'm asking you to table this tonight. The second thing that I would like to mention is that time and again, I've questioned, I've had questions about the soil reports that have been conducted on the Lewis Road parcel. But I can never seem to get a straight answer on why we haven't seen the Earth Solutions Soil Report that the Burton Foundation conducted earlier this year. In 2013, the soil was deemed to be substandard and unable to support structures over 2,000 pounds without significant excavation or putting in basements. I've encouraged city officials to ask to see the Earth Solutions Soil Study that the Burton Foundation completed earlier this year. Because in the PZC meeting, Ms. Manning stated that the soil was fine to build on. Yesterday, I spoke with a gentleman who spent many years working for a soil boring company and soil boring testing company in the area. He said that soil doesn't change unless conditions change. I've lived here for the past 10 years, and in my opinion, conditions haven't changed. Once again, I'm not a soil expert. But he went on to say that the soil is likely not conducive to large structures, and that a developer may be trying to pass on the problem of being stuck with an unbuildable parcel. It happens often. Developers typically won't release soil reports if there is something wrong. When I asked what could happen if they ignore results, he mentioned there are a multitude of problems ranging from foundation and slab movement, especially since it's near the train lines, to cracking and shifting. The list goes on. Because the Burton Foundation has accepted the low-income housing tax credits for Emma's Landing, we know that these units will provide affordable housing for a mandated 30 years. What happens if the soil is indeed substandard and these units shift, crack, and move after the 30 years? Long after you and I are gone? But our children will be here, and our grandchildren will be here? And what does that say for the future residents of Emma's Landing? Who will be left to clean up that mess? As we have seen in previous meetings, the Burton Foundation has not always been open and transparent when it comes to answering our questions. It is our hope that you, our elected officials, will stop the rush to approve this development and instead look into and resolve our concerns. If indeed the comprehensive environmental Phase 2 testing has been performed, and all of the necessary soil and downstream testing has been obtained, and if the Earth Solutions report shows that the soil has changed and it's now acceptable to build on, then this should be something that could be quickly investigated and necessarily, and necessary assurances and all the test results could be provided to the public. If the required testing and investigation has not been performed, then steps should be taken immediately to ensure that this is accomplished before the City Council votes on this tonight. I'm asking you to table your vote tonight until you have the proper information regarding these studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, and for those who are tuned in online, there's currently two additional members with their hands raised. If there's anyone else who wishes to make public comment at this time, are be considered, recognized for public comment, please use the Raise Your Hand function so that I can see your way to be recognized. At this time, Mr., no, I'm sorry, Ms. Andrea Genix. I'm going to unmute you. Your hand is currently raised.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sound like a phone commercial. Hi. My name is Andrea Genikis, and I am located on Caldwell Lane. And first, I want to tell you that I'm not located on Caldwell Lane full-time. Part-time, I also am from Michigan. When I moved, let me turn this off. When we moved to Caldwell Lane, we did it because we had family in the area. Our intent now is to sell our big home in Michigan and to move to Geneva full-time. I want the council to know how totally disheartened I am by everything that has gone on. I am the one that spoke loudly at the last meeting, just because I got so upset, my voice went up, and I apologized. I'll apologize again ahead of time in case it should go up. I am the one that brought to the attention at the last meeting that I felt there was a conflict of interest. I felt that this has been ran-ratted through. I spent more time picking out the color of my last vehicle than we have spent on looking into every aspect of Emma's Landing. I want you to know, I am fully, fully engrossed and grained and loving everything there is about affordable housing. I'm originally from Detroit. I believe in affordable housing if it's done the correct way. I don't see this as the correct way. I see it being shoved through on a tiny parcel and putting a large group of people together and setting them up for failure. I have spent 30 years of my life teaching school. In the olden days, we used to take all of the kids that had any special needs and put them all in one room. Nobody progressed. Everybody just kind of stayed the same. With inclusion, with taking all of those children and moving them into the classrooms with the rest of the community that they live in. I can't tell you how these children have grown and succeeded because we didn't set them up for failure as we did before. I see this as a project that really needs to be studied and looked at. I don't know what the hurry is. I don't understand it. I think if the council looked at everything that we, as taxpayers of Geneva, have been saying, you would see more than one red flag. When I see 10 to 15 red flags, I take a step back. I don't move quickly. When I ask someone, is there a conflict of interest because your husband owns construction company and you're going to make over $800,000, and they don't know what their husband does for a living? That sent up a big red flag to me. That's when I thought, do these people really think that I'm that silly, that I'm that naive? I'm not. And once again, my voice is going up. I'm sorry. My 97-year-old father's giving me the eye over here. I want to stay in Geneva, but I will tell you that in the last two years, I've not been happy. Those of us that live on Caldwell Lane are truly concerned. Truly concerned. There are just too many red flags. So all I ask is that we continue on the path of affordable housing, maybe even using that same piece of land, but not the way it's written up now for lots and lots of reasons. And I just don't want, leave us to be pushed into something that we're going to have to be living with way past my lifetime. I want everyone to succeed. I want affordable housing, and I want it in Geneva. I want it. But I don't see, I don't like what I hear. And so far, as far as transparency, I think there's been none. And every time one of us comes up with something, we don't get answers. We just don't get answers. When this started in 2019, and they supposedly met with Rex from, you know, from our association, that meeting never happened. That was my first sign that something was wrong, because Rex was a heck of a guy. And I just wonder if he's looking down on me now saying, you know what, Andrea, you fight the fight. You do what's right. Because I got to tell you, that's been my whole life. I spent the last three days signing up 200 disadvantaged people, some that don't speak English, for the coronavirus. You would have thought I was giving them Christmas. Luckily, I'm bilingual. Luckily, I could figure out ways for them to get what they needed. I don't just talk the talk. I walk the walk. And I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing it with the Burton Foundation. I did my homework. I can't find anything, any financial papers, nothing on the Burton Foundation. I looked at their beginnings. You ought to do the history on the Burton Foundation. I thought it was actually a foundation. It just blew my mind. I'm not here to put anyone down or give disparaging remarks about what someone does for a living. But just don't tell me they're doing it from the goodness of their heart, because they aren't. Follow the money. That's what I'm asking you to do. And just because I live in a small little condo, part-time, doesn't mean that I shouldn't be heard. I want this done right. I have offered, in fact, the mayor probably remembers me. Years ago when we moved in, I said all I wanted to do was have lunch with the mayor of Geneva because I'm so impressed by the man. I still do, by the way, Mayor. But I am not impressed with this. There's a better way, and if you want me to help you find a better way, I can do it, and I can speak three languages. I can help you do it. And I want affordable housing. Thank you for listening to me. I so appreciate it. God bless you. Once again, I have a 97-year-old World War II veteran waiting for dessert over here. So God bless you, no matter what you decide. I just wish that you would table this just until we can get through the pandemic, and I can get more people signed up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. McCready.
We do have several others? I'm sorry, we do have several others with their hands raised at this time. Just a reminder for those tuning in, if you do wish to make public comment on this, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand function. Mr. Peters, at this time, I'm going to unmute your microphone and recognize you. Mr. Nick Peters. You've been unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I want to start off by thanking the council for their work. You guys are all in an unenviable position tonight, being asked to make a decision on such a contentious issue. Quite frankly, though, as I'm about to point out, you've been handed a project in which the full due diligence has not been done, and you are being asked to make a decision with incomplete information. I want to bring to the attention of the council, as well as my fellow Geneva residents, the fact that we are lacking a critical piece of information here before voting for or against this development. Us Geneva residents have no idea what sort of impact this development will have for what the most of us, for what most of us is the single largest asset we have, our homes. To be clear, what I'm about to point out is not an argument for or against affordable housing per se, but it's an argument about preserving the home values for the hard-working residents who live in our community. The same thought process should be applied if we were here tonight discussing building a water tower, a power plant, or any other number of structures that have the potential to decrease property values. Throughout this process, I've seen a number of studies cited that claim affordable housing developments have no impact, positive impacts, as well as negative impacts on home values. As Alderman Kassarag has pointed out to me, and I quote, "A quick Google search will find many articles and studies on both sides of the issue." Mr. Kassarag is right. There are numerous conflicting studies that have been conducted in a number of locations for varying types of developments. This is not a reassuring fact. And if anything, this supports the fact that we need to look further into how this type of development may impact home values in our community. The fact of the matter is, this development has been in the works for over a year now, and there has not been a single study that looks at how property values are likely to be impacted, looking at this exact development in this exact location. Not, I'm sorry. Now, you may be thinking, in Geneva, we don't have studies on how half a million dollars are going to affect the prices of the $300,000 homes. That's because there's no evidence to suggest that more expensive developments decrease the value of less expensive homes. In fact, the inverse of this looks to be true. There is, however, as I'm about to point out, at best conflicting information on how affordable housing developments in areas just like Geneva impact home values and appreciation rates. So let's dive into that a little bit further. Because as is usually the case, the devil is in the details. And it's once we start understanding the nuance of an issue that the reality of the situation becomes more apparent. In 2015, Stanford University professors Rebecca Diamond and Tim McQuade studied how affordable housing developments impacted home values. Did this study look at one location, like the 2013 study done by Douglas Massey? Did it look at four locations, like the study done by the proposed Campania build for the Batavia? No. This study looked at 16 million transactions across 15 different states and almost 7,100 low-income housing tax credit sites. Okay? The next two things I'm going to tell you are quotes directly from the study. And I quote, "We find LIHTC development helps revitalize low-income neighborhoods, driving up home prices 6.5%, lowering crime values, and attracting a more racially and income-diverse population. LIHTC developments in higher-income, low-minority areas leads to local house price declines of 2.5%." It goes on, and I quote, "In higher-income areas with low-minority populations, the average household who chooses to live near LIHTC is willing to pay approximately 1.6% of their total home value to avoid living within 0.1 miles of a LIHTC site." So as I noted before, it's really the details that matter here. As a whole, affordable housing developments in cities like Geneva tend to have a negative impact on home values. So should we use this study as a basis to reject the proposed Emma's Landing development? I don't think that is the case. What the study shows, though, is after looking at 16 million transactions, there is a legitimate concern as to how this development may impact our home values. Furthermore, this is exactly the reason why an objective and independent study needs to be done for this exact development in this exact location. So what happens if the study comes back and there's no impact on home values, or even a positive impact? Well, I say that's great, and that leads credence to the arguments to approve this development. But what happens if the study shows that there's a negative impact similar to what the Stanford study suggests? Then I think we have to consider further, as for any of its positive impacts, what price are we going to pay and who is going to pay it to have the proposed development in our community? And let me remind the council that a negative impact of even a couple percentage points is a transfer of wealth with no regard to income on the order of tens of thousands of dollars per household. This is a negative impact of an asset that residents in our middle-class neighborhood may be relying on for retirement or to help their children pay for college. With this in mind, I think the City Council members need to ask themselves tonight if they are prepared to explain to your neighbors that you voted for a measure that will cost them tens of thousands of dollars. As I mentioned on the onset of this, I do not envy your position here tonight. Though it is no fault of the councils, it is extremely negligent for this proposal to have made it this far without having this type of study done. Approval of this proposal without knowing how this development is going to impact our home prices would be nothing other than reckless. I urge the council to take this concern very seriously and study the impact of the development on property values in the community before making any decision to approve or deny this development. A vote to approve this measure at this point is just too high of a risk to all of us Geneva residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see here, I've got... The next one online is listed here as Ms. Jennifer Beal. I'm going to unmute your microphone. There's a shift. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I apologize. My name is Jennifer Beal. I didn't have my glasses on when I typed my name in. I just have some comments. I really appreciate your commitment to a fair hearing tonight. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of the different opinions. I've attended many city council meetings where aldermen have stated that they firmly believe that the council should represent the community. When concern was raised by the counselors, by the council, that developers were looking at my neighborhood as ripe for development, I'm over by the train station, and aldermen stated that the council needed to be protective of my neighborhood in order to prepare for what comes next. After hearing so much opposition to the Emma's Landing project, I'm hoping that the council would be equally concerned about protecting the future of the neighborhoods surrounding the proposed development. the proposed development. After perusing the city's comprehensive development plan, I was uplifted to see that the city seriously regards the input of the community in building future developments. The plan specifically states that the city shall provide an ideal opportunity to reintroduce local residents into the planning process, promoting community involvement and encouraging citizen participation. I'm still quoting here, "Citizen participation is an integral component in the planning process." This was so encouraging for me to read. I love that the government, our local government, is honoring the wishes of its present residents. Looking at some of the objectives in Section 3 of this plan, Objective 1 states that the city wants to maintain and enhance the city's small-town atmosphere and character by maintaining the scale, quality, and character of existing single-family neighborhoods. Objective 2 aims to ensure that new development and redevelopment complements the existing desired community. We've heard about the susceptibility of Burton developments to crime. Why would we wish to bring that to more neighborhoods? Are we at risk? We're real concerned about that. I continue to read the comprehensive development plan and found that Objective 4 aims to protect residential areas from the encroachment of incompatible land uses and the adverse impact of adjacent activities. So this is why the current residents are worried about flooding and perhaps increase of heavy traffic. Finally, Objective 16 states that the city wants to sponsor and promote programs, activities, and events that foster a strong, unified community spirit and identity. I find it very inspiring and empowering that the city government values its living current members so highly. And I hope you'll see how the Emma's Landing project would not foster a unified spirit, nor a strong sense of community. The goals and objectives of this city comprehensive plan plainly state that in order to be effective, the comprehensive plan must respond to the expressed values and desires of the community. So I'm glad that the city has allowed so many hearings with the zoning commission and is interested in hearing more from the public tonight. It reassures me that the city is interested in how its residents feel about this development. So just to wrap up, to close with a statement from the Chamber of Commerce, "The city of Geneva is a model of the spirit of working together, a place where residents and guests prosper from the genuine warmth of those who live and work here." I found community in the dictionary is being defined as a feeling of fellowship with others and a cohesiveness that brings people together. I'm not so sure that the Emma's Landing project is in keeping with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive development plan. So I hope you'll truly consider all of the written and face-to-face testimonies over these past many months and are listening tonight and that you're hearing how many current residents and a voice on the zoning commission are not in favor of this proposed project. Thank you.
Ms. Jill Wilker, I'm going to unmute your microphone. You're next. Again, this is for 3B on the City Council Agenda Public Comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jill Wilker, and I apologize a little bit. I am suffering from a daisy of a cold, so if I go off and cough, I apologize ahead of time. I want to thank the city council and the city staff and the speakers before me. I found them extremely compelling and just had my complete attention. They thought of a couple things that I hadn't even thought of yet, and I'm sure hasn't even been approached to the PZC, and I'm glad it was brought to city council's attention tonight. And one of them was just the previous speaker who spoke about community and how important it is to have community input in a development that's going up or potentially going up nearby you. And I thought back onto the Old Mill Race Inn proposed development, and it was only in its planning stage, but it was a community-city-wide input of all these people, and everybody listened, including the developer. And what I'm finding out, and I think the frustration is, is that we are not being heard. And it's now at the final hour, it's at midnight at the final hour, and we still have a lot more to say. It would have gone probably much smoother, because I think the majority of us want, in some aspect, affordable housing built over here. But if the developer and the city had arranged to sit down with us here in the community, and you have our information, and we just spoke about it, I think we could have resolved some of these issues rather quickly. But now, I think there's somewhat of a loss of trust, certainly with the developer and unfortunately with some of our council members. But anyway, as to the point of this evening, I don't believe that the council should actually vote in support of this development quite yet, because, as I said, there are a few things that remain outstanding. And one of them was raised by Ms. McCall, was the soil contamination. Now, we did ask about soil, so that was put in front of the PZC, and we've had to put out a lot of FOIA requests to get to our answers. And unfortunately, some of our FOIA responses were delayed and were lost, but we finally got them. And one was about the potential for nearby leaking underground storage tanks over at the Lewis property. And I just said a Phase 1 environmental assessment was done on the property in 2020, and I provided that for you. And a Phase 2 assessment was recommended because of the nearby leaking underground storage tank. There is no Phase 2 assessment in the public record, and it should be publicly determined that there is no contamination of any kind at that property before this project is approved. I mean, the first thing I think of is Flint, Michigan. And I'm sure it won't be anything of that scale, but if it even remotely exists, this is something that certainly must be looked at. Secondly, there is an impact on adjacent property values that has not yet been publicly discussed by council. And one of the previous speakers touched on that, and I was just blown away by just his measured speech and his facts and wasn't speaking by emotion. But he did mention the Stanford Affordable Housing Study and the Batavia Campana Market Analysis on Affordable Housing. And both of them concluded that there is a negative impact on surrounding properties. So the Burton Foundation has not rebutted this conclusion. There is no, there is no analysis or market analysis or study that rebuts this at all. Now, if this development passes, is it expected that adjacent property owners simply accept a decline in their home values? Now, Emma's Landing was first touted as a housing option to area teachers or retail workers who are looking for affordable housing in order to live within the community they work. However, Emma's Landing's concept, in my opinion, has substantially changed since they first rolled that idea out. The Burton Foundation's 2020 application to the Illinois, they're the IHDA, which I have also provided, now provides for 14 housing units of the 45 at 30% AMI, average medium income, and 13 housing units at 50% AMI. There is no longer any 60% AMI housing units, which was the original, which was the original concept. Further, supportive housing was introduced, and this includes alcohol, drug, mental health counseling, and that's per the State Referral Network. And that will be for at least 15% of the units at the sites. And it will be taking place, these services, at the leasing office per Ms. Manning's application. Never was 30% AMI or 50% AMI revealed by the Burton Foundation or city staff. We only learned, or I did, upon a FOIA request that the AMI was changed from 60 to 50 to 30. I really am very interested, and this is an excellent example of, when did staff know about this, if they even did? I know the Burton Foundation knew about this back in March or April of 2020. Why weren't we told? And anyway, are these services, mental health, alcohol, drug counseling, even permitted in leasing offices in R7 zoning? Now, these material changes have altered Emma's Landing concept, and I believe will diminish the value of adjacent property and certainly is not compatible with surrounding uses. And lastly, although density issues have been discussed and raised, they really have not been publicly vetted by council. Simply put, there are too many units and additional structures on the property. Now, staff compares the density of Emma's Landing with the density of the townhomes of Sterling Manor. But that's problematic, because staff does not take into the account the square footage that all the additional structures on Emma's Landing occupy. You've got an emergency access road, a large water basin, you've got off-street parking, you've got a leasing office, you've got a playground. Once you remove the approximately 48,000 to 50,000 square feet these structures occupy from the total square footage of the property, you reduce the buildable acreage on Emma's Landing by over an acre. And with that reduction, Emma's Landing will have a maximum density of 30 housing units. Now, that is more comparable to the surrounding community. So I thank you for your time and thank you very much for your service as council members and mayor. I appreciate it very much.
Robin Kelton, I'm going to unmute your microphone. And again, a reminder for anyone else who's tuned in on GoToMeeting, if you wish to make public comment regarding Item 3B this evening, please use the raise your hand function so we can see in advance and plan for you to speak after Robin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
All right. My name is Robin Kelton, and I actually just wanted to follow up on a comment made, well, now, a couple of comments made about the value of homes near affordable housing. And I commend my fellow citizens for being well-read on issues like that. I think it's important for everybody to dive into the peer-reviewed literature, not just what you can find on Google, but what has been studied and what we would consider authentic scientific methods. But I want to point out the study that was specifically quoted as saying housing values within .1 mile of affordable housing could, and keyword here, could drop 2.5%. The authors of that study and a number, like a significant meta-analysis that quotes that study as well, have discussed that the decline in home values is likely due to an increase in racial diversity, not the affordable housing itself. So that decline was not found in communities with high rates of racial diversity. It was only found in neighborhoods that were majority Caucasian or white folks. So while that may truly be an effect that Geneva sees, especially because Geneva has statistics of diversity of 96.3% white, 5.7% Latino, and 0.1% black, again, that finding of that decrease and potential decrease in home value has, it's misrepresented about it being about affordable housing and it's likely the variable of racial diversity and stemming from racial inequality and racial integration that's missing in a community to begin with. So I just wanted to go back and make sure that when we look at studies like this, we account for variables and that we look at the context of the findings. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, there's no one additional online with their hands raised who has not already been recognized.
Thank you. We're going to invite City Administrator Dawkins to read the subject line of any and all correspondence received during the course of this meeting.
Sure. I've received two so far. One was from Robin Kelton, who I believe just spoke. The subject line is "Support for Emma's Landing." And the second is from Rod Nelson, and it says "Identity," in parentheses, "not conflict of interest." And then I just received another one as we're sitting here from Robin Kelton, again, "Support for Emma's Landing."
I will note that the other comments were posted to the website, those we received before noon, and those that we received afternoon were sent to all of the aldermen. And again, all of those comments will ultimately become part of the record. There are a few additional members who have not been recognized who had raised their hands while we were taking our final call there. Chris, Chris Boehner, I'm going to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks. This is Chris Bonner, local resident of Sterling Manor, pretty close to Lewis Road. I've tried, I tried to drive home safety as one of my biggest concerns for not wanting this Emma's Landing to be centrally located by my house, only for, you know, for really one reason to me is safety for my kids. Lewis Road's a nightmare to begin with, traffic. The city, you know, does do radars occasionally, the thing they pull up with a community vehicle on a trailer. But I don't really see police during peak times. I see flags that go up on speed limit signs, which I don't think flags do much. It'd be nice if the city would maybe think about putting "No Through Traffic" signs at either end of Lewis Road, because really, at the end of the day, during, whether it's beginning or end, during rush hour, there's a lot of people, you know, folks driving through, just cutting through, you know, to avoid traffic, whether it's on Randall or whatnot. But I've been here five years now, and it's gotten worse every year. I know the Burton Foundation made a comment on the last Planning and Zoning Committee that other municipalities or counties or whatnot have taken the 30% traffic studies into consideration and think that's fine. But during a pandemic, I think that's just a slap in the face. You really don't get a true reading until we're back to normalcy. I'm definitely not back to normalcy when it comes to driving. And to me, it just doesn't make any sense. So I'm hoping all you who are sitting on, sitting there tonight, voting yes or no, you know, takes that into consideration. I forgot which alderman or council member brought this comment up last week as well or two weeks ago, whenever it was. The comment was around that, I think it was 145 units that went off of Britcher Road behind the Lowe's right there. And I believe him or her mentioned that they thought it was conducive, given that that area is kind of the same landscape of Lewis Road. I don't, I don't know how that's a true comment. Britcher Road, where that 145 complex went up, there's no houses built right off of that Britcher Road. There are subdivisions. So when you drive down Britcher Road, it's a straight shot. Lewis Road's total opposite. So you got houses, driveways right off of Lewis Road. And I think most of the people who drive during rush hour that I catch almost, you know, hitting my daughter or, you know, we worry crossing, they're probably doing the same speed that they go down Britcher Road. So to me, you know, it's safety. And through this whole process, with all these FOIA requests and listening to how this has been handled, not only from the Burton side but from the city side, it's disheartening and it makes me lose trust in my local government. I mean, there's been so much gossip, there's been questions that haven't been answered. I don't know who to believe. I'd want to believe my government, but I don't even know if I can believe that. You know, just, just last week, someone, someone, you know, it was a hallway conversation walking my dog. Somebody mentioned that Emma's Landings is named after a local resident of Geneva who was on a Rotary Club or something like that. And I know the, I know that the Burton Foundation has been adamant that, you know, no one from the city of Geneva is involved with this project. But if that is true, I don't even know, because I have, you know, no one's ever asked that question or no one's really answered that question. So if that is true, it's like, you know, what type, what type of hallway conversations or what type of stuff's been going on behind the scenes? It just, it's disheartening and it makes me rethink, you know, how this process has been pushed through during a pandemic. So I'm just going to get back to my main comment, and I appreciate all the work you all have done, but safety is my biggest concern. And Lewis Road is a nightmare. And I know, I, you know, I invite you all to just kind of camp out on one of those roads or Lewis or Sterling meets Lewis when there is some action. You'll see what I'm talking about. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, who I believe has not been recognized at this time, is Ms. Karen Fitzsimmons. Your hand is showing raised. I'm going to unmute you. Karen, you've been unmuted on our end, but you show as being self-muted at your phone or laptop.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing me and thank you to the mayor and the city council for listening to our comments. My main comment tonight is that the number of people opposed to Emma's Landing is ninety-nine percent compared to the people who are in favor of it. And every person except for maybe one that had spoken through all these meetings that lived, that actually lived in Sterling Manor, has been opposed to this. And it's great. They can have their opinions. They don't live here. I get it. It's great. I think it's great, too, that Geneva somewhere thinks about affordable housing. But when we find out slowly the information trickling in as they've spoken how it's gone from eighty percent to sixty percent to thirty percent, now we're in Section Eight also, it's a little shocking and it's a little disheartening that this information had to be discovered by residents and it's slowly dripping in this way. I'm also very disheartened that Ms. Manning has no idea what her husband does for a living and has to text him and says, "No, he's not president. That's what he said when I texted him." Come on. I'd like to take just a vote of people that don't know what their spouse does for a living. That was just ignorant. That's all I can say. I will also say that I spoke personally to the builder, a local builder who had looked at this property numerous times to purchase, to build on. And he specifically told me there was a soil problem there. And what was one of the reasons they moved on, along with the fact that there's a pond and three railroad tracks, and they'd have to put another pond in. And there was a safety issue along with the soil issue. So that was me personally speaking to someone. I just think with the number of people that are opposed to Emma's Landing, it would be, what the city should do is to table this until we can have more discussion and discussion on what would work there and what would work for the people that live here. You know, our homes are very valuable to all of us, and we really do not want to see our property values go down. We have just recovered a property value in our home. Personally, we bought in '06. And just in the last six or eight months, has our property gone back to where we bought it from. So this area has been slower to recover than other areas of Geneva out here. And I've spoken to many realtors about that, too. And they're like, "We don't know what happens out there or why." But it has been slower to recover. And I think another problem that most people on here have is the city and planning and zoning, especially, they've been snarky and dismissive of the residents that are opposed to this. Instead of us feeling like we're being heard, we all feel like we're being dismissed. So I will end with asking the city to please table this till after the pandemic when we can all be in the same room, we can all sit down, there can be some transparency. We can go through what we discovered with the FOIA request. Emma's Landing has a right to respond with reasonable answers, not, "I had to text my husband to see what he does for a living." And, hold on one second. There's been zero community outreach for this, you know. And you talk to anybody in Geneva, unless one of us has told them about this out here, they have no idea what's going on, and they're a little shocked. But they don't live out here, so they don't really care. A lot of them, so they're not on the meeting. The real estate agents don't want to come on the meetings that I've asked you because they're more worried about their business. And they don't want to hurt their business by opposing the city of Geneva. So please table this until after the pandemic where we can sit down, have an honest conversation with some honest answers, nobody feels like they're being left out, and we can talk about it. I don't know what that says. Oh, yeah, okay, my husband's giving me a point here. Mill Race Inn downtown was in the newspaper. It was in every newspaper. The Daily Herald, all over Facebook. It was in The Chronicle. And Mill Race is a historical point in St. Charles. I mean, I'm sorry, in Geneva, I'm from St. Charles originally, so I still say I live in St. Charles sometimes. But that is very important to people. That's in our downtown area. But Sterling Manor isn't in our downtown area. And we just kind of feel it's being shoved out here where nobody wants to see this. And it doesn't have to be in the downtown, so the whole city of Geneva won't be commenting on it. So please heed what we've asked, and please table this till after the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, I will recognize Mr. David Bloomberg. I'm going to unmute your microphone.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I recognize that it's a long hearing tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I am the attorney with the Townhomes of Sterling Manor HOA, the neighboring property. It was I who filed the protest on Friday afternoon. And while I appreciate Ron's comments, and I respectfully disagree about what he says about the supermajority, I'm not going to make a long legal issue of that tonight. Ron and I can talk as attorneys and deal with that issue later. As the representative of the neighboring association, I have had the chance to review plans and the engineering information. I've spoken briefly with Mr. DeGroot about this matter. And at this point, I really just want to narrow the objections we have to this approval to the specific issue of the pond, which my client owns, the Townhomes Sterling Manor. It is on a plat, and it is our pond. And, you know, it took some digging for my client, that digging took place largely before I got involved, to find out what the plans were for Emma's Landing as related to this pond. And it's been very, very difficult for us to get information. The most that I could say as I sit here tonight is that I'm aware that there is an easement on the relevant plat as it relates to this property, and that it's a general utility easement. And I know that the developer plans to use that easement for some kind of purpose with drainage, using some methodology, the details of which I don't know, all based on this blanket easement that we don't know about. Now, as I've told Ron earlier today, and I indicated to Mr. DeGroot, and I'd like to say before the body tonight, I have every confidence that with some more detailed conversation and with some more detailed sharing of information, that the nature of how the owner of this property will use this evening can be worked out and negotiated and agreed upon. But I can't, as the attorney and somebody that has to advise my client, just say that they have every right to do whatever they want based on this easement, especially as it relates to drainage, especially as it relates to a pond that we own and are responsible to maintain, with such a limited degree of information about how that's going to be done. I don't feel comfortable to say and go ahead and approve it. I really think that there needs to be some conversation, of which I have no question we can agree upon it, but some degree of negotiation about how they plan to use our pond, you know, what kind of digging and drilling they have to do, and how any future maintenance cost will be shared between the parties. That is really the whole basis of my limited objection. I want to have some more conversations. I'm not asking for a lot of time. But I do feel that this important information of my client, really, we don't know right now. And we're just asking for a limited period of time to address that narrow issue. I thank you again for your time and appreciate everybody's willingness to listen to everybody's comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, again, we'll recognize Mr. Simonian. Your hand is showing as being green and raised here on this end. So out of abundance caution, I'm going to unmute to see if you wish to make public comment on the matter at hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And yes, this time I do want to speak, so I appreciate it. First of all, I listened to the almost seven hours of testimony at the Plan Commission meeting. And I sat there and said, "If I was still an alderman, what would be the concerns that I would have?" In listening to all this, trying to root out the emotion. And there were four issues that if I was still sitting in your seat, that would be concerns to me at this point. Not that they couldn't be resolved, but I think they're concerns that need to be addressed before a vote is made. One is the economic impact study that was submitted. And based on the data presented, it appears that there is a direct correlation between the proximity to affordable rental communities and annual price appreciation in nearby neighborhoods. And the study shows that within a mile, home values are impacted rather dramatically. And if you look at that over a period of time, it could be a substantial amount. The second concern I would have would be the second variation that was requested from Section 12-3-2, which is to reduce the maximum allowable centerline offset of intersection right-ofways from one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to twenty-five feet. The Geneva subdivision code prohibits the street centerline offset less than one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to avoid awkward street intersections. The pavement alignment should, and I want you to focus on that word "should", the pavement alignment should mitigate the concern of potential vehicle conflicts at the intersection. I would be seriously concerned about the word "should" mitigate concern for potential vehicle conflicts at the intersection. If there is a vehicle conflict at the intersection, I believe that word "should" is going to create a liability for the city of Geneva in potential litigation in the future. Number three is the testimony of the engineer of the Burton Foundation said he cannot control five percent of the water on the land. He has no way of capturing that water and moving it to where it needs to move. Five percent is almost a half an acre. So you have a half an acre of water, almost a half an acre of water, that their own engineers cannot capture and cannot control. So the question is, where's that going and whose responsibility is it? And last, which I heard at the end of the last meeting, which I was unaware of, is that only twenty-seven of the forty-five units are going to count for affordable housing versus all forty-five. I thought all forty-five we're counting is affordable housing, not just twenty-seven. And if that's the case, then maybe they should just build twenty-seven units so it's a complete affordable housing complex, and it might satisfy the Sterling Manor density concern. And then lastly, for those of you who are on the city council, when the Western Avenue development in the old greenhouse space came before us for a duplex development, which was, in my opinion, a great, great development, the citizens from that area came out in large numbers and protested it. It's not that they didn't want it, development, they just didn't want duplexes. They wanted single-family homes to match their current footprint of their neighborhood. And we listened, and we voted against those duplexes, although they were great developments. If you recall, Alderman Cummins even made a public statement that he would consider buying one. He thought it was such a great development. This is, and then now you look at the development, what's being developed on Western Avenue, are single-family homes. So at the end of the day, what we may consider as a good idea, listening to the neighborhood, we walked away from that, but yet now, single-family homes, beautiful single-family homes are being built there, and everybody wins. I think the council needs to take a look at this in somewhat the same breath. That it doesn't necessarily mean that affordable housing at this location is not going to happen. It's just, I think the folks are just trying to ask, "We're willing to work with the developer and the city. It's just that there's only been two people at the table and the subdivision and the folks that are going to be impacted the most with their housing values, the traffic, the water, have not had a seat at the table." And I think that's where a lot of this, these trust issues and a lot of these concerns lie. So thank you very much for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. John Connolly, I'm going to unmute your microphone.
Okay, hold on one second, guys. Yeah, I wanted to tell you there was a problem when I raised my hand on green, which GoWebinar says to do. It didn't work. When I went red, my hand was raised. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Yeah, so I don't know, just, that's probably why you're getting those comments. My hand was red, but people are getting in. So it's red to get in, green not to get in, I guess. Thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight. Thanks for your service to the council. I'll be brief. My wife and I object to this design as it's currently set up. Emailed all the aldermen and Mayor Burns our thoughts Friday, so you've got those. But one great idea that came out from this public comment was to spread the wealth of affordable housing throughout Geneva versus squeezing it into just one neighborhood. And right now, the design is kind of the tail wagging the dog, where the tail is the Burton Foundation, the dog is the rest of us. So I'm asking all of you who are voting tonight, if we vote on this tonight, to do it or not, or they will table it. But asking you this, if this design was squeezed into just your neighborhood, your neighborhood, would you want it that way or would you want it spread throughout Geneva so we could all participate in the success of affordable housing and our senior housing goals? So right now, Burton has us fighting amongst each other. It's not the way I've seen this operate since my wife and I have lived here for thirty years. And right now, I just think we're not being the best version of ourselves. We're better than this approach to affordable housing as designed by Burton president. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, there's no one additional with their hand raised digitally online.
Ms. Dawkins?
And we received one more email from a Chris Humes, and the subject line is opposed Emma's Landing.
Deliberation by the city council will commence. Any questions from the city council with respect to what the framework as established by City Attorney Sandak is for deliberation purposes? Fantastic. Yes, Alderman?
David, could you go over, you know, I guess I had a hard time understanding the water and the pond that's currently there. How is that, how is that working with the, is it a tension pond or a retention pond proposed for Emma's Landing?
I think it would probably be best to have the applicant's engineer provide an overview. David, if you're able to, can you raise your hand?
That would be great. That would be great.
David Reondo?
Can you hear me?
I didn't realize there was an engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the team. And during that commentary, Alderman Marks, if you could just mask up again, that'd be great. No, that's quite all right. No, understood. We have the engineer for the applicant, sir, madam, can you hear us?
Yes, okay, Dave Riando, I'm the engineer and the professional land surveyor on the project. So I will answer your questions on the pond. What we have done is we have designed a pond that's going to be above the high water level of the existing pond west of the project. And the reason we elevated it up above is, of course, we're starting up on a hill anyway with the project. That way, I could design it without any interference to the existing pond. When that pond fills up, it overflows, the sidewalk goes down Lewis Road. By having my pond higher than that high water level, it would continue to work throughout all storm events without any interference, interference with the flooding that's existing that's going on now downstream. So we, the way we designed it is we kept the existing drainage pattern that's out there right now. So everything that's flowing on the site to the west at a pretty good clip, because there's a large slope coming down that hill, is just currently undetained going right into the pond. I believe it's going off at like three feet per second right now. But, but when we put the pond in, we're going to hold back quite a bit of water acquired by the city and the county stormwater ordinance. And we're going to release it very slowly into a restrictor through a restrictor and then into that pond. Now, there's a couple of comments I want to make. Now, early on, two, three weeks ago, there was 5% of the area that I said I couldn't catch. And what it is, it's when we, when the Nelson property was acquired to make an entrance, it's that entrance where it connects to Lewis Road is lower than my pond that I talked about, that it's elevated. So that's what I meant by it was physically impossible. I'd have to be pumping water uphill to get it up into that pond. But I've since been working with the city's stormwater engineer, and we've come up with a solution for me to catch that 5%. We are going to make a small pond down by the entrance at that same elevation as the entrance. So with this new design, 100%, the stormwater from this project will be captured, detained, and released at a much slower rate. Then there was another comment that I'd like to address. The attorney for the homeowners association was questioning the right we have to release our stormwater going west into the existing pond. The original subdivision plot, it's clearly written on there, I can email him a copy if he wants, but it's clearly written on there that it was always the intention of this parcel to drain into that pond. This parcel was included in that original stormwater design, and there's even some detention that was provided in that pond for this parcel. So, and then Illinois Drainage Law, you can't, you can't not let water that's draining onto your property now, you know, somehow like not allow that person to continue to drain water on there. This doesn't work that way. But anyway, he brought up a good point about, you know, who would pay for my pipe outletting into his pond? And I'm sitting here while he's talking. I can come up with a different way. I can route that pipe down into the inlet on Lewis Road, and then there wouldn't even be any kind of a maintenance coordination between the, you know, the existing HOA and this project. So I'll go ahead and make that change. And is there any other questions?
The floor is still yours.
So I just want to get some clarification. So that new pond that you're talking about will collect all that 5%, correct? So that's off the table totally. And then you're saying, right now, you're going to redesign the pond that you're putting on your site to not go into the current pond of the HOA, but now go to Lewis Road with the same kind of restrictor pipe into the sewer, into the city storm sewer? Is that what I'm hearing? I just want some clarification on that.
Yes, that's what you're hearing, and that's, like I said, I just came up with that an hour ago, listening to him. It could have gone either way. I could have like took in this pipe straight west into the existing pond. The contractor would have to be installing it on a steep grade, and there was some, you know, concerns I had personally on that, but yet it was a shorter distance. But I think after everything that's been said, you know, it's well worth, it's going to be an extra, an extra 80 feet of pipe. So I, I think we would, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we just go ahead and run that straight down into an inlet along Lewis Road, and then we're not putting any kind of a Florida intersection with riprap into that existing pond.
I can't tell if this is, so that will still have a restrictor pipe, right? That it will go slowly into that storm sewer? Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you. Can we make that part of the, to prove it, that that has to happen, Attorney Sandak?
I'm going to ask City Attorney Sandak to chime in on this. I would refer the council to my comments earlier prior to this topic being discussed. Under the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, item four of that recommendation, which is pretty much standard operating procedure, final engineering shall be approved prior to building permit issuance by the city. It is my assumption, therefore, that whatever new phase or new program or new design is created, that has to be approved by our city engineers too, prior to permit. But for the record, certainly, if you want to...
Yeah, I mean, you can make that as part of, that they're going to put that law, the height through to the city. I'm just...
Yeah, I don't know that you want to be that specific. I think you want to rely on city staff to make sure it complies with the county code. But it's subject to final engineering, whatever the final plan is. They don't get a building permit, they cannot proceed until and unless it's approved.
So we don't have to put anything in the, in the ordinance tonight to make sure that happens?
That's correct.
Okay. Just, thank you.
Of course.
Appreciate that. There also, well, here on, there also was, I think, some comment made earlier by the HOA president about a floodplain moving. Did I hear that right, or that they want to look at that? Did you look at that when you were doing your water studies for that area?
Had my mic off, Kevin.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear, did you ask me a question again?
Yes, sir.
My question was, is earlier, someone from the HOA, I think it was the HOA president, got on and had some concern that the floodplain was, was moving, or that they wanted to have an engineer look at that. Did you look at that, and did the city engineers look at that, when you were doing your review of the storm sewer and water?
Are you asking me, the engineer?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so, you know, I've been working really close with the city engineer, WBK. Is he on, is he on the call at all?
No, sir. WBK is not present this evening.
Okay, I'm going to have to speak for him then, and I hope I get it right. But my understanding is that he is in the process of doing a regional flood study, and, you know, he, he was, he appeared to me confident that if I kept my pond up above, like I explained to everyone, that it would no way interfere with his flood study that he's doing at lower elevations. And he was, he was, seemed to be pleased that I was following all his recommendations and the ordinances of the city and the county.
The floor is still Alderman Marks.
You know, for now, Kevin, I'll wait. Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Okay. Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Kassarok, floor is yours, sir, and then I'll go remotely to whoever raises their hand.
I'm probably going to ask for the floor a few times tonight, so I apologize in advance. But I did just want to follow up with Alderman Marks here and his question. And I, I think, for me, and for the residents of the city, in particular, the residents in Sterling Manor, I frankly didn't get how the water got to a pond that was above where it was draining, and the lower pond down the street, down Emma's Way, and things like that. Could you maybe explain that again, or maybe in more layman's terms? I apologize. I just want to make sure we all understand how that works.
This question is for whom?
Well, really forever, but I assume it would be for the engineer for the Burton Foundation that's online. But anybody, David, anybody's welcome to answer.
Engineer for the Burton Foundation, you're still with us, sir?
Yes, and I'll address that again.
Thank you very much.
So, yes, so there's quite, if you've, you know, driven by, there's quite a bit of elevation change on that, you know, there's, I think we've been throwing numbers out at, so I'm just measuring here right now. So there's 12 feet of elevation change from when you're driving on Lewis Road at the corner of Heritage Court to the top of where my, the highest unit is going to be. So that highest, from that highest point, it all starts sloping west, and the road will slope at 1.1%, so it's going to be really flat up there. And so there's plenty of room, so the slope down the road is four feet, but that still gives me, what, eight feet, right? That I'm, this whole thing is above the existing pond, eight feet, and my pond is really large, covers a big area, but it's a shallow depth, it's only two feet deep. See, so the whole thing now, the whole design is elevated above the high water level of the existing pond that's just north of Lewis Road on the west side of this project. Does that help?
I'm not sure if I'm the only one not getting it, but no, it didn't really help. I guess my question, maybe to clarify it a little bit, again, maybe more in layman's terms, angles and slopes and runoff rates and things like that, what I'm trying to get at is really for the residents here that are concerned about flooding, is how the water from below gets into a pond from above, and what that pond down at sort of the bottom of Emma's Way that you referenced even implies for the whole system. I hope I'm, I'm being clear, or I'm happy to clarify, or I don't know if anybody else on the councils having a hard time understanding this besides me, maybe they could ask follow-up questions too.
Okay, I'll, I apologize because I was explaining the lion's share of the drainage, which is up on top of the, of the project, but you're right, there is that small 5% that was, wasn't draining before, but we've captured it now because we've made a pond adjacent to the entrance, lower than the entrance, about two feet lower, and it's just going to be a small, right, out there along Lewis Road, south of the entrance. We will capture it there, and then we're going to pipe it down, quite a ways, we're going to pipe it down 300 feet to the intersection of, that will be Lewis, and then Canville, there's an inlet down there, the very southern tip of the Nelson property. That's where that small 5% of area will drain down, be held, and then released into that inlet down on the intersection. So that will all flow downhill.
Okay, I hate to belabor the point, but I've, I've kind of made a commitment here to kind of getting clear answers for our ward, and I committed to myself to make sure I didn't just let things go here. So the drainage, the top, okay, so that answers the question about the 5%. And say, among others, Mr. Simonian's concern about the half acre and all that kind of stuff. But the bulk of the drainage is for the pond that's on top. I guess, how does water get into that drain? So how does the 95% get into that detention or retention pond? If it's, is it above the, the water? Maybe, maybe I'm confusing, is it just above the other HOA-owned pond?
Yes, it's above the HOA pond. Excuse me, I might have, I'm, I'm sitting there staring at it, so it's probably easier for me to see this, but yes, it's, it's, our pond is above the HOA Sterling Pond. The whole site is above, the whole site is above that pond, except for that small, you know, 5, 10% that we were just talking about. Everything else is above it, so it can drain to the west into my pond, then be released lower down in elevation into the existing pond that's Sterling Manor Pond west of this project.
David, this lane? What do I do? It's on. I just want to make the point that it's dry, that, that, you know, when the rain starts, it starts as a dry pond, and so it takes time for it to get up to this seven-inch pipe before it even starts draining. And that's, that, that, I forget, there's a term for it, that the, the difference, that difference is the operative quantity of water that he's working with and engineering to before it becomes operative to be draining off. And then with the restrictive pipe, it, it doesn't really start actively losing water until after the rain has stopped. And so it's that, isn't that called bounce between the two? That is what he's engineering back from relative to the acreage that's going into that pond. I hope that's helpful.
I do think I understand it a lot better now. I appreciate everybody's sort of forbearance on that. As a follow-up, I think I still have the floor to just the drainage issue. I guess I was curious what sort of rain event, if there was a measurement for that, that this pond would handle. So I think we all know we had a six-inch rain last year, last May, or something like that. Would this be able to handle that type of event? Is, would it be able to have half that type of event? I don't know if there's a measurement or calculation for this, but can we give the residents some idea of what type of amount of capture this can handle, again, in more layman's terms, rather than sort of, you know, feet per second, or whatever calculation might be? I guess that's for the Burton engineer as well, please.
Yes, the city and the county have just adopted a new rainfall requirement for design of these ponds, and I'm going to look it up for you right now. It used to be 7.5 inches is what we were supposed to do, to design ponds for, and now it is up to, I believe, 8.5. it is up to, I believe, 8.5. Eight point, yeah, 8.5. So it's designed to handle 8.5 inches of rain. That's considered the 100-year storm, and that's, that has to fit in that pond, and then it overflows. Anything higher than that goes through a controlled overflow weir that's got riprap on it for protection, so it doesn't erode. And that's, plus the city has a very robust control structure, where it's a six-foot manhole that has a concrete wall in it, inside that manhole, and so when the water gets up that high, it actually starts to go over a concrete wall. A combination of that large overflow structure, plus that riprap weir, is extra protection to, you know, just to make sure there isn't any problems if we were to get rain above 8.5 inches.
Great, that is very, very helpful, I appreciate it. For now, that'll take care of me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Alderman Bruno, joining us virtually, you had your hand up, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone that's been presenting. I'm perfectly comfortable with stormwater. The pond is below 95% of the graded area. That 5% has another pond below that, I'm totally good with that. That can only be helpful to the flooding issues there. I'm not gonna go off long on all the issues, but there was a statement made, about the makeup of adjusted median income breakdown for the units proposed, and I believe that, let's see if I can get back to the, I guess this is a question for Burton. I believe the makeup is proposed as a percentage of 80% of the adjusted median income, and 60% of the adjusted median income. I think there was some statement made about 30%. Can I get clarification as to what we're looking at here with the breakdown?
There are up to 80%, excuse me, of the area median income is what the rents will be. The 30% are lower. We were thinking of folks who are working part-time, not full-time, maybe have children, or just have a part-time job. They do not have Section 8, there is no rental assistance in this development that was talked about earlier. We don't have any rental assistance, we just set the rents at a scale all the way up to 80% of the area median income, with a lot of the units being at 80% of the median income, but allowing folks who work maybe part-time to be able to afford to live there. But we don't have any rental assistance.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now, thanks.
Anything else, Alderman Bruno?
No, I need my time.
Okay. Anyone else who's not yet spoken, wish to ask a question or comment? Alderman Maladra, hold on, hold on. Alderman Maladra?
Okay, thank you. I wanted to explore the environmental studies a little bit. So what we're hearing is that there is some report out there that says that there was a Phase 1 that states that there is a problem. As I understand it, the report says that there is, it's a, no further remediation is required, no further action is required. Is that correct? I guess that's for David, or?
It's for, yeah, I think.
Somebody.
Ms. Manning will answer that.
Just as an overview, the Phase 1, that actually was not on the city's site, it was on the site to the east. And they did get no further remediation, however, if we need to, we will go ahead and work with our soils, test it just to make sure.
Okay, and I'd noticed also that there is in your planning budget funds set aside for a Phase 2 study. Is a Phase 2 study going to be done, or what triggers that?
Normally, the lenders require it. I've never not done a Phase 2, so I'm assuming we'll be doing one here.
Okay. Is that something that we could require? We could say approval contingent upon successful or whatever, Phase 2?
It's a State of Illinois construct, so I just, and I will ask the city attorney to comment, but the short answer is no, we cannot require that. But, I mean, you're in the industry, I'm certain the banks would if they want to let. Mr. City Attorney, you want to opine on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alderman, I was looking at a text from the attorney from the HOA. Could you ask, rephrase the question so I can make sure I'm answering it properly?
So, the Burton Foundation says they have never not done a Phase 2. I'm confident then that there will be a Phase 2. But just to add, you know, extra emphasis, I was wondering if we could add a condition that says a Phase 2 will be done.
You could make that a condition, if you wanted to make a motion and make that a provision within the conditions of the final plan. And I apologize.
That always happens.
Yeah, no, I mean, typically, a Phase 1, if there's a no further remediation letter, or if there's no requirement that a Phase 2 be had, there's no need to do a Phase 2. Now, I know banks like to do that, because banks like, you know, belt suspenders, coveralls, and everything like that.
It's gotten worse, true.
Notwithstanding that, that's an IEPA issue across the board. So again, if they have a no further remediation letter, and if there is a clean environmental report, you shouldn't, in my opinion, ask for a Phase 2, just because you want to ask for a Phase 2.
Right.
If there's no predicate cause, you shouldn't do it.
Okay, so, and now you guys, again, have to correct me if I'm wrong, but the report that we found out about today does state no further action, no further remediation, but also recommends a Phase 2. You typically do them anyway, usually the lenders require them, the lenders are evil people.
I didn't say that, I love lenders, they give people money.
That's true. So I am thinking that making sure, again, basically my opinion on a lot of this is, whatever steps we take going forward, we need to make sure that we are being careful and doing everything as conservatively as possible. So, I would suggest that we add that as a condition. And before I make a motion, I would welcome feedback from my partners.
Well, I would suggest this, that if you want to have specific feedback regarding that idea, I would entertain the motion so we can narrow that discussion on that topic only. If you're not prepared to do so now, we can go on, we can come back, it's up to you. Floor is yours.
Okay, I will make a motion that we add as a condition of plat approval, completion of a Phase 2 environmental study that, you know, verifies that the property is buildable.
Is that a fair motion?
If its property is, I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's buildable.
It's buildable. That's absolutely a fair motion.
Motion offered by Alderman Maladra, as so eloquently stated, is there a second to that motion? Second by Alderman Marks, discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion, ladies and gentlemen. You can ask Mr. Sandak, you can ask Mr. DeGroot, you can ask the Burton Foundation. Yes. Alderman Caven, floor is yours.
If there is something that is found, whose responsibility is to pay for mitigating that, if there is something that's located?
So I'm really good at finding bad soil, and if we do find, we do clean up, and we do a remediate, and we do get the NFR letter.
Okay, thank you.
And we do pay for it.
Anyone else on the motion? Alderman Berghardt?
I would just, thank you, Mayor. My clarification is, we're only, we're talking about the city, the city lot, not the Nelson lot that just got annexed. Are we talking about the whole thing?
Excellent question, yes. That's what I'm talking about, anyway.
The city's lot.
Okay, sorry. I rolled my eyes, because I thought you were saying yes to both, so the city, the buildable lot. Okay, thank you.
Anyone remotely, questions or comments regarding the motion? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. It sounds like this is, well, is there a mechanism during construction, absent this mandate in this motion? Is there a mechanism why, that, how this would be discovered, if there is anything so that it could be remediated? Would we discover this without a Phase 2? If there is anything to discover?
Well, I think it's important to, and I know all of us understand this, but I think it's important for those perhaps tuning in, and maybe as a refresher, and I'll either allow Mr. Sandak, Mr. DeGroot, perhaps the Burton Foundation, what really is the difference between a Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3? Yeah, it's, Tracy, do you want to chime in, or David? We've discussed this ad nauseam at other meetings regarding other developments. I mean, a Phase 1 is substantially different.
A Phase 1 site assessment is really reviewing existing records and documents where we're finding those existing NFR and NFA letters, perhaps a site visit and existing conditions, and identifying, I guess, the possibility of contamination. A Phase 2 would be actually doing some soil tests and confirming that there is contamination. If there is, then you would enter a Phase 3, where you're actually coming up with a remediation action plan, to clean up the site.
Which has occurred multiple times in the city of Geneva, as we all know. Just yesterday, Maladra's house, for example, it was just tragic. Alderman Bruno still has the floor, Alderman Bruno, is that a satisfactory answer?
Well, I mean, I understood what the Phase 2 meant, I was just, it seems if the neighboring property has a no further action required, or no action needed, it seems unduly onerous to a neighboring property. And if these issues would be picked up without a mandate, I'd just as soon not have the mandate in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I recognize Alderman Berghardt on the motion for a second time, anyone else wish to speak? Alderman Kozarog on the motion, then Alderman Berghardt?
Real quick, I think, where were the leaky underwater storage tanks? Which property, the city property, or the neighboring property? Or the Nelson property? The city?
It was on the neighboring property. It was the old plastic.
The property to the east of the city, there were, what I remember, boats, cars leaking gas, and I think it just kind of leached into some of the dirt, and that's why he's recommending maybe it might have done that, so let's just test that area to see.
So that would indicate no, I guess I'm confused why that would indicate no need for an environmental study on the Nelson property? Or is that not the property in question? Am I getting confused?
Yeah, the Nelson property is gonna, technically speaking, if I may encapsulate it through a drive-through, et cetera, it's not buildable property in terms of residential dwelling.
We're not building that.
Okay. I support this. I think the more that we can do to build the trust of our community, and let them know that all possible concerns have been addressed, would really, would really help. Everybody believe that what we're doing is right, I guess, so I would definitely be in favor of it. I can just anticipate the call, and so I'm gonna bring it out now. Are we willing to ask the Burton Foundation to make that record public, or would it already be?
It's not germane to the question, it's my interpretation, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure, I mean, it's, it's.
It's, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to opine here, but it's my understanding that when a Phase 2 analysis is done, that analysis is, is, what's the term? It's proprietary to the owner, and probably the IEPA, I guess. And whether that can be made public, or forced to be made public, I don't know.
I don't either, but if there's a problem, they wouldn't be able to build.
Right.
Fair enough, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alderman Berghardt?
Thank you, Mayor. For David, talking about Phase 3, and when we talk about remediation, remind me, there's different levels of remediation, depending if it's something's residential, or an office building, or, so that's when that comes into play, right? If something were to be found from Phase 2?
Right, depending on the type of contamination, the level of contamination, and then the type of development, whether there's basements, it's residential, it's commercial, that will help inform the remediation action plan that's necessary to get a NFR letter.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, thank you, David, what Alderman Kozarog said, I ditto, basically, I don't see any reason not to require this if we're allowed to, and it just, we've heard a lot tonight about a lack of transparency, and people frustrated not getting questions answered. If this is a step we can take that answers at least one of those questions, let's do it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion who has not yet spoken? Looking remotely, do not see any hands raised? Here in the chamber? We have a motion and a second with respect to the, for lack of better words, the requirement of a Phase 2 study be done by and paid for through the Burton Foundation. Roll call, simple majority is necessary to make this as part of the main motion.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Kilberg, aye.
Kozarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Motion carries.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and nobody absent, the motion has been adopted, and is now part of the main motion as adopted. We are back to the main motion as adopted. And the main motion, of course, folks, is to approve item 3B.
If Alderman Swanson would mute on the phone, that should take care of it.
Back to the motion as amended, folks, or the main motion, I should say. Main motion. Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Berghardt?
I'm sorry, this is for Burton again. I didn't exactly understand the AMI situation, so I'll try and explain how I see it, and then you'll laugh hysterically and correct me where I'm at. So we have two sort of price points. One price point is for people who earn up to 80% of the area median income. The second one is for families who earn up to 60% of the area median income. But if they earn below that, and they can make rent, then that's okay. You're not providing any assistance or anything like that. How they make the rent, it's, the rent is priced at a level that people up to the 60% and the 80% of AMI can afford. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, and just a reminder, this is council deliberation time, so any other member of the council, Alderman Berghardt, and then who's ever after Alderman Berghardt, if you wish to identify yourself?
Thank you, Ms. Manning, I'm sorry, I should have caught you before you went back to your seat. It's basically on that same topic, so I want to make sure I understand too. So, 27 units would be up to, for people up, making up to 60% of the AMI. But you said, what, you were saying about 30%, if somebody's working a part-time job, so are you setting aside a couple that would be for people?
There's a few 30s, and they go all the way up to 80%. The majority of the units are at 80.
18 up to 80%, right?
And below that, all the way down to 30%.
Okay.
There's a few of those.
And that could be, okay, that could be a retiree who's working a part-time job, or whatever, or, and... or whatever, or, and it's based on, is it family income? So say I'm a single mom and I'm, my mom lives with me and I have a full-time job and my mom works at Meyer, you know, 20 hours a week or something. It's our family income?
Yes, everyone at 18 or above has to sign the lease and they are taken, their income is taken into consideration.
Okay. And then at this talk now that only 27 of the units will count toward affordable, are affordable housing numbers in Geneva, is that because it's only those 60%?
It's everything below that 80%, up to 80%. Those are the units that don't really qualify at 60% or below.
Okay.
So that's why those do not qualify.
Okay. Do, should that be a problem for us? I guess I'm trying to see, you know, people are saying, well, why are we doing 45 units if 27, only 27 count or something? I mean, I could...
Well, I think it's still, 80% is still less than market.
Right.
And all future developments in a lot of cities, probably the nation, have to have an affordable component to doing any market rate. Ours are all below market rate. Just at 60% or less, those 80% don't count.
Gotcha. But you could say there's still, I could still see value in 80% because that's...
Because it's still less than market rate.
Right. And it's, okay, okay. And then on another topic, we heard a lot about soil and not, not about the environmental issues with soil, but that somehow this soil isn't buildable or it's somehow not conducive.
I commented earlier that the soil was perfect, or I don't know what word it was used. What I said was there's no serious concerns in the report.
Gotcha. And if concerns...
Then we will figure out how to deal with that, yes.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'm checking our friends remotely. Anyone wish to? Alderman Kilberg on the main motion, the floor is yours.
I have some, just some clarification on drainage. Yet, as it relates to the detention pond on-site, I see we got about 90 feet. How much of the 90 feet between the lot, Lot Five and Lot Six? What is the distance between the furthest western corner of that structure to the edge, the eastern edge of the detention pond?
I'm going to ask to see if our friend, the city, in, or...
You have 90, 91 feet to work with, east to west. So what is the width then of the detention going to be?
Is the Burton Foundation's engineer still with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. I was just trying to, trying to figure out what the question was from, from...
You want me to repeat that, sir?
No, no, I think I got it. So what you're saying, you know, Building Five, you know, the Building Five...
Lot Five, Lot Five, yeah.
Yeah, okay, Lot Five to the west edge of our property is 96 feet. And within that area...
The document I have shows 91 feet, sir.
Okay, okay. 91 feet, so within that 91 feet, that, that's the area for my, that's my detention area.
Right. That would be the, that would be the width, not the length, right?
Right. And the length would be the whole length, you know, the whole length of that...
That'd be 113 feet?
I'm measuring right now. So the, you know, I've, no, I've got 200, over 200 feet for the length of the detention area.
You, what do you, okay, are you showing 268 feet? I'm just, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right number. You have, you have, it shows 113 feet and it has 200, it shows 266 feet. Are you referencing the 266 then is what the, the length of it will be?
266 is the length of the property line on the west side.
Right, yeah. North to south, completely. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, and what, what do you estimate the depth of that will be?
The depth is going to be 2.1 feet.
2.1 feet, okay.
That's the depth of the water. Because, you know, I have to provide another foot freeboard. So my pond, you know...
What was that term?
Detention area. Detention area, it's a dry base.
Right.
Detention area will be three feet. One foot of that I can't use, that's called the freeboard, you know? That factor of safety, so to make sure the berm does not get overtopped or anything like that.
Okay. Now, I have a question as it relates to the hydrolysis. And that would be, okay, your overflow, I guess, could you use the term overflow pipe?
Yes.
Okay, you, you indicated this evening that you're going to direct that then to Lewis directly and it's not going to drain into the homeowners association detention, is that right?
Yes, but, but someone did make a comment that I have to get approval from WBK. This is just something that came up, it came up an hour and a half ago and I came up and said, hey, this looks like a good idea, but I really need to get his okay.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. You'd indicated then that you would enter into the same storm sewer then that drains the homeowners association detention area, is that correct?
Yes. Personally, I think it's a great idea, but I, but, you know, the storm, the city stormwater engineer has to agree with me on that. But that, to me, looks like a really good way to not go in and disturb that existing pond, the shoreline of that existing pond.
Okay. By diverting the water, the way that you're indicating, and in a serious storm event, and I guess the homeowners association, and I've seen photographs of where it's, it's, it flooded over Lewis Road, and I think, is that correct? Have you seen those photographs?
Yes, I've seen the photographs. And I commented at one of the meetings that that was a very helpful photograph that someone had sent me because it confirmed the way I designed this. What I did is I found the elevation of that sidewalk. And the photo that somebody had sent me showed when it overflows, it overflows on the sidewalk exactly like what, where I thought it would be. And I took that elevation of that sidewalk and made sure the bottom of my pond was higher than the elevation of that sidewalk.
Okay. Now, my next question is, we've had an experience on the east side where essentially when you're pumping or moving water into a storm sewer or sewer, what you can do is, is if your flow takes priority or is further downstream, will that preempt the drainage from the homeowners association detention in a serious storm event?
So...
In other words, will it retard the flow and the drainage of the homeowners association detention if yours is further downstream and enters the storm system and preempts their flow?
I would have to ask WBK because he's doing a flood study of the whole system. So he would know more than, and he would be better to ask that and answer that question.
Is that something that we can get clarification on and feedback? Because I don't want to divert a problem where they don't want it flowing into their detention. But if you, if you overwhelm the storm sewer and theirs can't drain, are we, are we, are we really solving the problem? And are those homeowners associations condominiums going to be at greater risk in a serious storm event than, than they are today? I don't know. You're the engineer, you're the one that can answer that question for me. And, you know, if you say, don't worry about it, then I won't worry about it. But it doesn't seem like you can tell me tonight that we shouldn't worry about that. Plus, we're talking about a modification here that we don't even know if our engineers are open to. Is that right?
The, the way I have it shown on the plans that you have in front of you...
I don't see it on the plans.
Oh, okay.
Because it came up, you brought it up tonight.
No, no, I was just saying, the way it is, without this, this thing that I, that I am going to recommend during final design, remember, this is preliminary design, I have a crack at it at final design. Where I could still work with WBK, just like we worked together and put that little pond down by the entrance, that was all part of final design.
Okay.
I will definitely bring this new idea up to WBK. I personally think it's a good idea. But he may come back and say, no, just because of your concern, what you brought up, we don't want to get our water in ahead of that pond. We want you to dump it into that pond and not slightly downstream. But I know I have some ideas, I can figure out how to get into that existing control structure.
But theoretically, what I've said here tonight, there's some, some level of potential risk associated with that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
It's, you know, right, right now, it's, it's... WBK had me prepare an exhibit which proved that my proposed runoff is much less than the existing runoff. And that's what I prepared for him. And that's what, when, naturally, when you abide, right now, we have a piece of land out there, 7.5 acres, that's not abiding to any kind of ordinance. It's not being restricted, it's just freely running off. So when you bring that into the ordinance of .10 CFS per acre by putting a pond in there, it's much less than the existing conditions. So this is improving runoff rate from what it is now. Now, if I put it directly into the existing pond there, or if I pipe it around and try to get it into a concrete control structure where we wouldn't have to worry about erosion, wouldn't have to worry about riprapping the Florida End section, you know, will that make any changes to the hydraulics of the existing pond? I don't think it will, but WBK has to take a look at that.
Okay. That's all I have as far as engineering. I might have some other questions before we wrap up here tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch on Alderman Kilberg's point is, right now, I guess this is the, Mr. Ren, Ren Dao. The, currently, that, that property dumps unrestrained into the, into the existing pond. When that gets overtopped, that just dumps directly into street storm drains, I presume?
Yes, and then what happens is the storm, you know, storm sewers are designed for 10-year storm events and overflow routes running down the street, you know, going over sidewalks and all that, that's all designed for the 100-year storm.
Right, so, so that uncontrolled parcel we have now will, instead of just dumping unrestrained, will be trickling out. Even if it were to dump into the existing pond, water will be coming more slowly into that existing pond. So it, it seems, as a matter of definition, that that will be less of a burden on the storm sewer system, is how I approach these.
Yeah, correct, you are correct.
Thanks.
Aye.
No one else seems anxious, so anyone object if I recognize Alderman Kilberg for a second time? Alderman Kilberg, your floor is yours, sir.
Well, it's just, it's just related to this topic. I just, when you, when you build streets and you have rooftops and driveways, I think normally the rainwater runs off a lot faster on those surfaces than across open ground. And am I wrong there? I, you know, I think the ground, the earth has a capacity to absorb some of the rain and the runoff. And when you build rooftops and driveways and streets, my experience is that the water runs off a lot faster. Is that wrong?
No, I'll, I'll answer that also.
Okay.
About 10 years ago, Kane County, City of Geneva, and a lot of communities adopted this new requirement, which is a, called BMP, best management practice, where you have to infiltrate into the ground the first one inch of rain and hit any new pavement that you put out there. So if you look inside that pond, you'll see the hatching I have. That's an actual three-foot by, it's a very large, three-foot-deep trench that promotes infiltration of the, of one inch of rainfall. So that's a mitigation measure to account for the fact that you are, you have a grass surface now and then you're putting pavement down, you're putting buildings down, and that's now being mitigated by a best management practice infiltration trench.
Is that like a, would that be similar to what people have around their foundation? It's like a small drain tile then, is that what you're saying, or?
Yes, it's, but it's a very large drain tile. It's 24-inch pipe wrapped in concrete and then wrapped in fabric. And again, that's a BMP infiltration. They're trying to, like I said, mitigate for impervious surfaces that you are adding.
Okay. So where does that, where would that be installed on the site then? Would that be along the streets? Or how is that, how's that incorporated?
That's in the bottom of the detention pond. The, the other option I could have done was the rain garden, okay? Which is, basically, it's going to hold 12 inches and you plant it with native plantings and stuff. But that's a maintenance headache. And on this project here, I was nervous and I think the city engineer, he had brought up the question too about, there would be a lot of maintenance involved in that and would this development want to continually maintain that? So we, we, we have a few options under the ordinance and the option we decided to go with was this underground system because there's very little maintenance involved.
Okay, very good. Can I still ask another question?
Yes, sir, floor is yours.
Okay. This would be for, for Ms. Manning. If she's still, is she available?
Yeah, she's with us still.
Okay. Obviously, this, this project has created a, a lot of concern and a lot of inferences of a lack of communication, et cetera. I'm just asking her, and for our benefit as a city, what advice or what suggestions might you share with the council this evening as it relates to lessons learned and how we can improve this process in the future if in fact we move on additional affordable housing at some point in time? How can, how can we diffuse some of the concerns that have divided our community to some extent? And what advice might you share with us this evening that would be helpful to this process in the future, if that's an appropriate question?
I think the process was good. I mean, everybody got to ask questions and I tried to take notes as quickly as I could. I did try to answer every question that was asked of me. Excuse me. Sometimes I might have skipped over a question because they were coming quickly, but I, it would get reiterated at another time and I would write it down. So, you know, as far as zoning, I mean, zoning isn't about who's living inside the buildings... buildings. It's more about the development and what we're doing. Are we building a beautiful community for you? And we require of ourselves, as we do on others, making it as beautiful as we did when we built it. We take care of parking lots and restriping. We mulch. We take out any trees that die. So we want it to be beautiful for you, beautiful for you for years. And I mean, at least 30 years.
I guess, I don't know if you've answered the question. I think, is there any way that we can confuse some of this initial, or some of the pushback that we've experienced? Obviously, you've been down this road before.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is typical for this type of process. I think it's unfortunate. It's, I don't think it's necessarily healthy for the community to have this type of division. I understand that there's always going to be resistance.
Yeah.
And I think that there's an educational process that can take place. I think there's a level of communication that can take place that can help diffuse a lot of this. Apparently, you don't feel as though there was anything that could have been done previously or earlier in the process that would have been helpful. You just feel, you feel as though this is typical? And this is just the way it has to be? Or is there something that can be done to prevent it?
Well, for this particular development, I did reach out to the HOA. I did talk with the president, not the previous one, the current one. I did talk to a couple of the board members, and they wanted really nothing to do with giving us access. So as a team, we worked around that, and we figured out a different way to get access to this landlocked site. As far as transparency, I've tried to be as transparent as I can be. Personal attacks, I'm not used to, so that was very different for me. I just think that if we could stick to the development, the zoning process, it would be okay. My husband is not the president of the Deer Creek Construction. I was asked that at the beginning of a meeting. They didn't like that answer, so I texted him saying, "Did you get a promotion I didn't know about?" He said, "No." So I reconfirmed it. Sometime, I've been doing, you know, I used to be investment in affordable housing. I remember when I was 22. I was a part of a process where we were in this role-playing. We were somebody that did not want the development. We were a lender. We were a syndicator. We were the general partner. And it was this situation. So unfortunately, this is always the way it's been. And this is what we have to do to get a development completed, just like a market-rate developer. But unfortunately, we're just treated differently. But to say that, the buildings that we do have, that's why we take such good care. Because in the future, we want to do another development. So that's why it's very important to us to keep beautiful property for you to be proud
So you're saying that there wasn't any way that this could have been prevented? Or it could have been minimized as it relates to a lot of the resistance from the neighborhood? That this is just inherently a part of it? And that it seems like you've been pretty well-conditioned to deal with it?
Well, unfortunately, this is what we do, which is why we try to explain that we have to go through all the zoning as a market-rate developer. We pay all the same consultants, and it costs the exact same amount of money to build these developments. The difference is the private equity that we don't have to pay back, that helps us reduce the rents. So we don't have that higher mortgage.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burghardt?
I'm sorry, Ms. Manning. I'm sorry. I keep pulling you up. I mean, that's tough to hear. That's tough to hear that what, you know, you said you went through at the beginning of your career is what you've experienced again and again.
Not just me, all affordable housing.
Sure. Do you have any happy endings? Are there happy endings to this? Like, because we've certainly all read about stories nationwide where we've seen communities like Geneva have seen very similar divisions and anger. But often, once residents move in, it's a lot harder to, once you attach a face with the neighbor or something. So is there...
We definitely, in the buildings that we have, we definitely invite the community in. So we, in South Elgin, we have those two developments. We actually reach out to like the Lions Club and things like that to come have meetings at our buildings, you know, and just be a part of the community. We try to do the outreach. Here, they're all townhomes, so we can't really do that. But we definitely want to be a part of the community and a positive impact. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else from the chamber? This is on the main motion, ladies and gentlemen. So Alderman Marks?
It's probably back to the water. You know, we've talked about how it works on the property, but does that all go down to the pond, then, that's next to the, that detenage area that's next to Fire Station Two that overflows? Does all of this flow to that area? Or...
David, are you comfortable? No, you're not. Okay. We have the city engineer, okay? Excuse me. Burton Foundations engineer? Excuse me.
From what I understand from talking with WBK, is yes, it does. It all drains down to where you had just said.
So how you, probably more hypothetical, but how you've really designed this is probably going to slow the flow to that area? Is that correct to say?
Yes. Yes. It will also, not only this 7.5-acre city parcel now will be controlled, but there'll also be some control on the Nelson property. So a combination of those two should be a big benefit to the area, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm going to, yeah.
Sorry. I went back. Went back to my notes. Apologies. You know, the other topic we haven't touched upon has been traffic. Because, you know, during a normal, during the day, the traffic there is really manageable. But when you get to the middle school, starting and letting out, you know, when you get on Lewis or Fargo or Kaneville, it becomes quite, it's a lot. And, you know, one more car is really going to make a difference there, I can tell you that. Because it can take a half hour to get out of a subdivision sometimes. Are we doing anything to handle that traffic? Or do we just feel that the traffic is the traffic? Because, you know, there's a subdivision just behind Sterling Manor that we approved a number of years ago that still has 67 lots to build out. They build three-car garages easily. We're talking about another 120 cars that we've already approved. So my question is, has those been looked at, those extra cars coming out into that site? You know, because they do come through Lewis to cut through. People come down, pack, and cut through Lewis to try to miss some stoplights. I don't know who can address that question, but I guess I'm asking, you know, have we looked at what the potential is for the development that is still going to be built there that we've already approved into the traffic flow that we have currently now? And what we expect from this development?
That is a good question. Theoretical or otherwise, and I'm glad you brought that up. Because the reality is that there are multiple vacant properties west of this... Exactly, yeah. So, yeah, it's a good point.
The traffic study that was done did include projections for future development. So that has been incorporated into the study. With this development, it was expected to generate 22 trips during the peak morning hours and 29 trips during the peak evening hours, resulting in delay increases in the study area intersections below three seconds, with most delays of intersections experiencing less than one-second increases during those peak hours.
I think that's hard to believe, but okay.
Sorry?
One second or one minute? Because I said, "One second." That's hard to believe. I mean, because it can take you 10 minutes to get through those.
The overall delay increase is a result of the proposed development that each of the study area intersections is below three seconds. With most study area intersections experiencing less than one second of delay increase.
You're talking about, I'm sorry, increase based on this development, right?
Right.
Not how much is current, but what the add-on.
That extra add-on to that, is that, those numbers don't go into that, that those three seconds are really just talking about this subdivision going in? It's not adding some of those extra cars that we, you know, may come in the future because of new development or development we've already approved.
I have to look through the study again to confirm that, but I believe that the projections include this development and future development.
Wow. It takes longer to get through those intersections now than that.
Now, the assumptions, of course, are that all the cars aren't going in the same direction. We all know that, of course.
Which they all are.
At the same time, you know.
Is the problem. You know, the biggest, I think, intersection problem, you have two that are really the problem over there. One is Lewis and Kaneville. Because of that curve, it's a little hard there to make. Did they look at that intersection at all also? And then it's the one at Kaneville and Fargo, because there's really no left-hand turn lane there, so that kind of backs up too. Do you know if they looked at those intersections at all, David? Or do they have a traffic person available?
Is your traffic available? No. Looking at the map. Alderman Marks?
That's okay.
Kaneville and Fargo?
Yes. It's right there by the retirement home.
Yes, that was one of the intersections studied. What was the other one?
Lewis and Kaneville. That's right by the development.
Right, yes.
That would be, I would think.
Right. That was one of the intersection studies as well.
Okay. And then did they look at Lewis and Fargo also as people cross there or not?
Lewis and Fargo? Yes.
And they, and those are still all under three seconds?
That's all included in the summary, yes, I provided. Those are the, there's an exhibit in the traffic study that shows all the area intersections that was, that were studied. It's okay.
I was looking for it, but there was a lot to read. Okay. Mayor, I believe, oh, there was one other question, and I think it's really for... There was one question asked during the public hearing that I missed the answer to, and it was regards to someone asking about cranes on that property in some study. Do you remember that question? What was the answer to that, if I can ask? I mean, is that a study that gets automatically done, or does it not have to be done?
I was thinking, I was thinking construction equipment cranes.
No, I was talking about, you know, because someone did ask that question, and I don't remember that answer.
Yeah, so actually, as part of a Phase Two, too, they will look at endangered species that might be part of the site that would be included in that assessment.
Okay. All right. Okay. I guess the next area I want to talk about is something that, it's realistically what the zoning commission really looked at, and that is, you know, the berm between the railroad tracks, the railroad property, actually, and the building. Are the railroad tracks there going on the north? The third rail that's coming in, is that going on the north or the south side of those tracks? Does anyone know that? And how close would that be, if it is on the south side, to this development?
It's going on the south side of the tracks.
So how close does that go to the lot line of their development? Do you have an idea of that? Because that's not on any drawing that I saw.
I don't have that overlay. The buildings along the north property line are set back at least 25 feet from the property line. And there would be a setback from there, too, to the tracks.
Do we think that the berm, the trees that we put there, is going to be enough sound barrier for some of those townhomes that are there? Or would it actually be some type of different barrier that would be better? You know what I'm saying? Is that, are those trees really going to? I mean, we get calls all the time there because those trains start, you know, hanging on their horns, you know, as they come closer to those intersections. So do you feel that that berm that the planning commission looked at for trees and shrubs is a good enough sound barrier? Or would you recommend, or should we be looking at something else?
I think the commission had two objectives, and one was to absorb some of the sound, but one was also to provide at least a visual barrier between the back of these units and the tracks and kind of a safety barrier for kids.
Yeah, for the little kids.
Right. So I think those were two objectives. I don't think landscaping will fully, you know, block the sound. You're still budding up to the railroad tracks. We have developments throughout the community that bud up to the railroad tracks without a sound wall or something more substantial. I've had good friends that live next to the tracks, and it's something you do get accustomed to, the noise.
So I guess, does the city staff feel that the barrier that's there is also enough safety barrier so that some little child that's not being watched may get too close to those tracks?
As of tonight, we have not seen a revised plan.
Okay.
Per the planning commission's recommendation. So we will review that and make sure that it at least satisfies their direction or the council's direction if that should be amended.
I'm just hoping that we get it close enough that, you know, it's really going to take a little kid some time to get through it, is realistically what I'm more worried about, you know? The sound is the sound, I guess, as we said. But I'm more worried about, you know, that close to a new track coming up and a lot of construction going on, little kids are going to want to see those, that construction. And that's my concern, because they're both going to be going on at the same time. But, you know, that is something that concerns me a lot, but I don't have the answer. That's why I was asking if you thought that the tree berm is enough, or if we should look at something else.
I guess I would leave that to the will of the council.
Okay. I don't know how, yeah. Alderman Coster? Let's let it go. I mean, I'd like to hear. Alderman Coster, you had your hand up, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I listened to that with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, you know, I do appreciate what they did in addressing that with the landscape and things like that. But I guess, just to be honest, I mean, my thought is, why not just ask them to put up a fence? I guess I'm not sure why we're trying to attack this with landscaping and trees and things like that. I feel like a fence takes care of both very well, take both noise and safety. And in my opinion, whether there's consistency, as Commissioner Mead pointed out in the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is not throughout Geneva, along the tracks. Just do the right thing and just protect the kids. Do it up front. Do it at the beginning. Let's not wait for something to happen later and regret not doing it. And so I actually planned on bringing this up as well, and I would be very interested in hearing what the council's thoughts are about that. And if there's any appetite for maybe making that a condition, I guess I will go ahead and make a motion so that we can discuss this independently of the main project at hand and make a motion that we require the Burton Foundation to build a fence along the railroad tracks. I know they were looking for more direction at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I thought about that. I really don't know a lot about fences, is there right things to do? But I would propose it be six feet high. You know, maybe using that transitional zoning. As a force, obviously, I'd be looking for ideas, but that is my motion to...
Can you redo the motion?
Sure. My motion today, I know I was rambling there a little bit. A motion to require the Burton Foundation to build a fence along the property line that abuts to the train tracks.
The motion by Alderman Coster is to build a six-foot fence along the northern property line behind the proposed Emma's Landing development. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Burghardt makes the second. Discussion on this motion. Alderman McGowan.
I saw Alderman Caveon's hand up first, but I'll be happy to talk. I saw Caveon and then Ruby, just to be fair. I did see them.
Okay, then Alderman Caveon, then Alderman Ruby, then Alderman McGowan. Alderwoman Ruby, excuse me.
I wasn't going to yell and scream, I promise.
It's all good.
You know, I certainly don't have a problem requiring to have a fence put up there, but if you want to do something that's actually supposed to be for sound or for noise or something like that, you're going to need to do something that's higher than six feet. If you want to put something that's actually for sound, you're going to need to put something there that's probably closer to like 20 feet tall if you want there actually to be any sound barrier. And I don't know with, how much higher that property already is up. And again, I'm all for putting something down there for safety. And again, I'm all for putting something down there for safety, but if it's technically for sound, or maybe you need to have a six-foot fence, still with some of the trees that are more in front of it building up to try to be more of a sound barrier, but if it's only a six-foot fence, I don't think it's probably going to accomplish what the overall goal is, in, in my, in my opinion, but I'm, I'm open to what anybody else thinks. I certainly don't have a problem with requiring a fence to be put up.
Thank you. I would like to know how much detail on this has to be decided tonight. I feel like this is a longer conversation. There, there's a lot of research that needs to go into it. I mean, is this something we could come back to if, if we vote on the motion, assuming the motion passes? Is this something that we can address after the fact? Sure, yeah, I, I would like to do that. I, I think it's, I think it's a valid idea, but, you know, like Alderman Kavan just brought up, you know, it's not going to address the noise. I just, you know, we're three hours in right now, I think we, I think this particular issue deserves a little more, more time than what I feel personally I can give it right now. So, that's all, I just wanted to confirm that if we could just talk about this after the fact, I think that would do it better justice.
As I understand, excuse me, as I understand what you're saying is, we would, we would, and please, jump in and correct me, but we would grant some authority to our professional staff to work with the Burton Foundation to explore the, quote, fencing option?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and just in regards to safety, I, I may sound like a jerk, but I absolutely value children immensely. I, you, you can't put up a fence along every inch of railroad track, so I, I'm not 100% sold on that aspect. I, I do, however, want to talk about it, think about it, pros and cons, figure out exactly what it would accomplish, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not interested in having a fence put up, and here's why. I used to hang out at Sterling Manor Park when my kids played sports there, and we'd walk back to see the train sometime or just look at the tracks. And there's no fence, as far as I know, there isn't a fence now. There's a huge stretch of open space, and there's some trees and shrubbery, what have you, and it doesn't seem to be much of a safety concern with current Sterling Manor residents. So I don't see why a different set of safety regulations need to be applied to the stretch of tracks that form the boundary of the Emma's Landing proposed property. Couple other parks in Geneva that I've spent a lot of time at over the years, again, a park that is right against the train tracks, the same tracks with no fence, are Dryden Park, which is right at Western Avenue, and also, and again, we used to go back there and, I don't know, I have, I have kids that liked trains, and, you know, they'd play at the park, they'd go back there, sometimes I'd have to go back there to, I, never, well, long story short, but, never mind. I was going to, I was going to tell you something funny, but I had to go back there. Okay, so there's no fence at Dryden Park, and Esping Park, we played baseball there, got to the, I'd get to the practice like 45 minutes, or, sorry, the practice would start 45 minutes before the game, I would bring my dog and walk around, you could walk right up to the tracks there, there's a well-worn path, and that's on the east side. So, we've got parks all along Geneva, from the far western part to the middle of town to the far eastern part, and I, I don't know if there's been a single incident that I know of that a kid has gone back there and gotten injured or hurt because of a train, so I think this is sort of like a ridiculous assumption, and I really don't feel like a fence is needed, and I, I don't feel like this needs to be discussed at all, but thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd probably echo some of what Alderman McGowan just said. It seems odd that we'd require new standards. Looking at a Google map here on my screen, there's a lot of homes, a lot of nice homes without any barrier between the tracks and, and the house. And then in terms of noise, I, I think to, to really make an effect on noise, I imagine that it'd be those expressway, those giant concrete walls, which I think would be unduly onerous for, for this, for this parcel. So I, I would be interested in mandating such a, such a barrier. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Berger.
Thank you, Mayor. My issue for the wall would be for child safety. The sound issue is, the sound is the sound, and plenty of people live along the tracks in Geneva and do come to get used to the sound, so whatever can do to muffle the sound, but the fence, for me, is thinking about the kids who are living there and kids whose parents are choosing, who don't have the free market to choose whether they want to buy a house along the tracks or not. This is going to be, you know, these are going to be highly coveted rentals for families who maybe haven't had an entry point to Geneva, and I hate to think of some family having to choose between their kid's safety and, and a great rental. My sister has two three-year-old twin boys who are active as all get out. My sister cannot live in these rental units. My sister can't go to a condo that has a pool on the ground level. I mean, I have friends who lived on Cheever, they moved away from Cheever because they had the freight train, the, the tracks through their house, and once their kid could walk, they were, they could not stay there, their kid was too, I mean, they had latches up on top of the doors. I mean, I just think, taking my kids to a park where I'm like, okay, I'm going to watch my kid at a park, and there's the railway, is different than living in a unit. I have a friend who has triplets. We did not go to Dryden Park, we did not go to any of those parks. We had a select group of parks that two women could watch three triplets together. So, for me, it's a safety issue, and I, I think anything that could make these, again, it's, it's different. It's different than me deciding to choose to buy, you know, a $400,000 house that bucks, bucks up on the, the train tracks. This is a higher-density development of rentals, and that's why I support Alderman Kastner's motion. Thank you.
Anyone else speak to the motion? Before I recognize Alderman McGowan a second time, Alderman Kilburg, I believe? Is that correct? Alderman Kilburg, floor is yours.
No, I, I think that, well, we're only dealing with 10 children in this development, though, isn't that what we've said or anticipate? But, on my experiences, rode the train into Chicago for 20 years, I think if you, if you observe, you see that there's a lot of fences along the tracks all the way into Chicago, and I, and maybe there, there are communities on the way into Chicago that require it by ordinance, but until you witness a fatality, which I did several years ago at DuPage County, there's now, there's a middle school just adjacent, just to the east of the, the DuPage County Fairgrounds, and there was no fence up there, but guess what happened after that fatality? There's a fence up, and also the DuPage County Fairgrounds now is fenced as well. And the tendency is, is that if there's, if there isn't a barrier, people are going to cut across the tracks to go to, to, to the neighborhoods to the west, I think, that's a possibility, and it's probably not the small children that you need to worry about, it's probably your middle schoolers. And, you know, that, that's some firsthand experience. I think if you ride the train into Chicago, I'd say there's more fences than there aren't fences, so. Maybe Geneva needs to look at that as, as an ordinance or a requirement in the future. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Alderman McGowan.
I mean, I appreciate everyone's concern about safety, but using the same logic of, of putting up a fence to prevent a kid from getting injured, why don't we have a fence along every stretch of parkway so that kids can't, you know, cross the street and get hit by a car? So, but for, for anyone here who thinks it's important to have a fence installed along this site that we're talking about for Emma's Landing, then I think out of fairness, we should only do that if we're requiring every single property in the Geneva city boundaries to erect the exact same kind of fence. We can't just single out this one particular site. And if, if we're getting into like middle schoolers or teenagers that want to cross the tracks, they're going to find a way to do it whether the fence is there or not, and the fence might even be more of a, like, an invitation to try to get across it. So, if, if you're not talking about fencing in the entire stretch of tracks that cut through the, through Geneva, there's always going to be a way around that fence wherever it ends, either to the west or to the east. So, I really feel like it would be kind of a, a waste of time and money and effort to construct just one little segment of fence that can easily, you know, you can easily just walk around it on either side. So, again, I'm, I'm not in favor of the fence. I think that, you know, you still have to watch your kids. If you have the kind of kid that runs away, I had one of those, you do have to watch them. So, that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kastner.
Well, I'd just like to reply to Alderman McGowan, and with all respect, I would require a fence anytime that I could. I don't believe that we're having a discussion now about a zoning change that would require it on single-family homes and their backyards, and I'm not really proposing that at this time, but we're not talking about that, we're talking about a, a subdivision. And, you know, I guess my goal, and what I've heard a lot from the residents in the area, is let's try to do things right and do them right from the beginning, and to me, this falls in that category. So whether it's everywhere else, or anywhere else, or nowhere else, I personally believe it's the right thing to do, and you put another subdivision against the tracks, and I would absolutely bring up the same motion and advocate for the same position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGowan, unless anyone else wishes to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, Alderman McGowan, it's yours. And then Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you, just a brief comment. And to be honest, another concern I have is that certain residents may wish to fence, install a fence or some type of barrier along the tracks for this particular subdivision, but then, using my argument of, oh, well, the kids are going to be able to walk around the fence wherever it ends, it's better now if we fence in the whole thing. So, let's, let's just extend that fence, you know, not just along the tracks, but along, you know, let's say, the far western boundary of the Emma's Landing site that we've been discussing, and the far eastern boundary. Does that make sense to you? So, I, I just feel like, you know, let's just be cautious about where this can lead, because while I do believe that some, some, you know, people have safety as their top priority, I feel that there are alternative motives that could exist as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeGroot.
Just wanted to, to make a quick comment or two. The reason the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended landscaping and not a fence was because that's what the subdivision ordinance provides for, that they, they can recommend a 10-to-15-foot buffer when a subdivision abuts the railroad tracks. There was some discussion about a fence, so, but that, that's the reason they went with the landscaping. I also wanted to, to mention that there's not a lot of room on that north property line, so I want to, I guess clarification if the motion was to replace the planning commission's condition with a fence, or to combine the two, because I don't know that the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and a solid fence along that north property line can be accommodated in that spot. So just wanted to put that out there.
Well, the, the motioner was Kastner. How do you respond to Mr.? How do you respond to DeGroot's, to clarify your motion? I understood it as a fence. No talk of shrubbery, to quote our, funny show, no talk of foliage, a fence. Is that...
I mean, discussion's been enlightening, for sure, on, on my understanding of the issue, so given, you know, I, I guess I would say that my motion was not exclusive of other ideas that the Planning and Zoning Commission may have offered. Whether or not that's feasible or not, you know, I certainly leave up to staff and, you know, would take their advice, but when I offered it, I guess I was not thinking there would be no trees, I was thinking that this would be in addition to it, although I did imagine that the trees would be much less.
You know, one option is, if you so choose, I'm not leading this council in any way, shape, or form, if you want to withdraw the motion and allow the staff to work with the developer to come up with the plan, and this all has to pass muster, of course, so, much like the engineering. If, if the purpose is to satisfy a appropriate buffer from the tracks, it could be a combination of both, who knows? But to Alderman Ruby's point, do we want to discuss things in such detail, such, but it's up to you guys.
I personally would be, would certainly be open and very much like to just talk with staff and Ms. Manning and everybody about it, so I'd be open to that, but I guess I'd be cautious if we're making a final vote tonight, and I know it's 10:30, and that's probably up for discussion, but I guess I would not want to leave that just to further interpretation, I would want to tackle that. Now, if we're not taking a vote tonight, by all means, I can withdraw it and discuss it.
No, I think, I think the intention of this council was to at least reach that vote, so the motion remains, is what I'm hearing.
So then the motion remains, absolutely.
The motion remains, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that clarify for you, David D.?
I mean, it, I understand the motion remains, that it would be an additional condition to place a six-foot fence along the north property line.
That's correct.
I don't know that that can be accommodated, that's something we'd have to look at in more detail. If we're looking for an alternative motion, it could be, you know, a solid screen consisting of fencing and landscaping along the northern property line, or something along those lines. I don't know, Tracy, do you? I know your team's been looking at it, is there anything? You can't fit both?
There's, there's other utilities back there. We've got a drain line that is supportive of the contours, we've got the storm collection system that's going on, we've got transformers back there, so there's, there's other things that are going on, and so, you know, it's, our, our preference is probably one or the other, so.
I'd like to keep the motion as a challenge to staff to try to come up with a solution that would include both. If I need to withdraw and restate the motion, that's fine, I could say something like David just suggested, a solid screen combination with fence and shrubbery, is that what you said?
That's a...
Landscaping.
That's a different, hold on. That, that would be an amendment to the pending motion that's been seconded and discussed.
I'm, I'm suggesting that I withdraw my motion and restate it as such, if that would be more palatable to the council.
Okay, I accept the withdrawal. I don't need to accept the second in order to withdraw it. The floor is yours, Alderman Kastner.
I'd like to make a motion that the, we require the Burton Foundation to provide a solid screen combination with both fencing and landscaping on the north end of the property along the train tracks.
Forgive me for interjecting, but prior to a second, does that include language "if achievable"? Because what if, and I'm throwing this out there, what if, in fact, construction of such a impervious screening interferes with stormwater management, interferes with junction boxes, interferes with what have you?
I'm trying to think of how to phrase it. I could add if achieved, notwithstanding engineering challenges that cannot be overcome? Would that be something fair?
I think. Yes, sir. Is there a second to that motion? Alderman Marks makes the second. Discussing this motion, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone wish to speak to this? I'm looking at the remote guests, seeing no hands up, anyone in the chamber? at the remote guests. Seeing no hands up. Anyone in the chamber? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I don't know for sure, but I don't believe there's a fence along the homes that back up to the tracks that are along Caldwell Lane and also Samantha Court. There isn't a, like, a barrier there along the entire length of the tracks, along all those homes. Where I imagine there are also people that have, like, children, or they have, like, friends that come over with children, or maybe grandchildren, et cetera. My second point is, I feel like we're making a decision about something that we have very little expertise in. And really, I would want to hear some feedback from maybe Union Pacific Railroad, as far as what their safety recommendations and guidelines are, if there is a townhome community within a certain distance from any existing tracks. And maybe they would say that a fence could be helpful, maybe not, maybe it makes no difference. But for us to assume that a fence will provide some type of, like, saving lives, honestly, I think it's a false sense of security. I think it's just for looks. And again, if, I would just like to emphasize, if you're not requiring the entire length of the train tracks that run through Geneva, that go through people's backyards, through many of the Geneva Park District properties that invite young children to come and play, that are designed for young children to come and play, it hasn't been a problem in our town. And if, unless you're requiring this for all of Geneva along the tracks, I know I'm repeating myself, then I feel like it's really, it's not the best decision to insist that just this one little segment of the tracks have a fence. I think it's unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Caven, sir?
Can I make a motion to call for the vote specifically for the portion regarding fence, curb, shrubbery, trees?
Yes, you can.
You can.
I would like to do so.
The question has been called by Alderman Caven. Madam Recording Secretary?
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Bergert?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the motion, as described and seconded, has been passed with a vote of seven in favor, three against. We are now back to the main motion. Yes, Alderman Maladra, sir?
So, it is 10:30. I do believe we have to put this issue to bed at some point, but I'm not positive it needs to be tonight. There are, I suspect, well, there's at least some issues that I think we need to hear more about. And then there are some issues that I think I want to explore that will require some discussion. So I'm curious if it is our intent to press on. And if everybody thinks it is, that's okay with me. But I'm also, you know, conscious of, we just spent 30 minutes talking about a fence. And I don't know, you know, at some point, the quality of the discourse starts to decline later it gets. So I just wanted to check and see if it is our intent to finish.
A statement, no question necessarily. Alderman Caven, sir?
Thank you. Well, as Alderman Maladra just stated, we just spent a half an hour talking about fencing, which I, I'm not making light of, I believe that it's still a valid topic. But over the course of this evening, we have spent a lot of time talking about stormwater, and soil studies, and a lot of additional things that I know have been discussed for some time. We found out that there are going to be some ponds that are, might help in water retention, that are actually different now than they were two or three days ago. And while I'm normally the one that would sit up here and say, I don't care how long I have to stay here, let's get this over with today, I would be in favor of continuing this personally, to a date later, whether it's next week or two weeks down the road. Obviously, there's a lot to talk about. And one of the things that we heard specifically from residents of Sterling Manor was, whether it's real or imagined, maybe they didn't feel things were as transparent, or they got as much information, which is partially why I think we're having the in-depth discussion that we're having today. So for me, I would support calling the meeting and moving it to whatever said date is. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Just to clarify, ladies and gentlemen, there is a distinct and important difference between motioning to table and motioning to continue.
To a date certain.
To a date certain. I assume that Alderman Caven is recommending the latter. If that is so, if that is true, sir, I would suggest March the first, or any date you so, but obviously, there's not the 29th, because it's one of those weird leap years.
Okay. Well, based off of how I believe everything that has gone, I would like to table the remainder of the meeting to a date certain of March 15th.
Yeah, chime in.
If I just may, keep in mind that the first and the third Mondays are the City Council Cal meetings. March 8th or March 22nd would be the meetings that we keep open for longer discussions. So, thank you.
March 8th. Point of order, Alderman Maladra?
Would you explain the difference between tabling and continuing for him?
A motion to table, in essence, kills the topic. It is not allowed to be brought back. A motion to continue allows it to be brought back if, in fact, there's a certain date attached to that motion.
Oh, okay. I didn't...
No, but your motion was correct.
Was taken as a motion to continue to a date certain.
Yeah, to a date certain, yeah. So, it's all good. Is there a second to the motion offered by Alderman Caven to continue this meeting to the 8th of March 2027?
I'm sorry, we have restated his motion, Alderman Caven.
Alderman Caven made a motion to continue this meeting until Monday, the 8th of March, 7:00 PM in this council chamber. Is that correct, sir?
Yes. Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Maladra. This is debatable, ladies and gentlemen. This is debatable. Alderman Swanson?
Uh-oh.
Good.
Phone's on mute. Phone.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay. I was going to second the motion.
Okay, got it.
I'm in support of his movement.
Okay, look. On the motion, ladies and gentlemen, this is debatable. Anyone wish to comment on this motion that's been offered and seconded?
I have a question?
Yes.
Related, I have a question related to the motion. So if we do decide to meet back here March 1st, sorry, March 8th to continue this discussion, what is the agenda gonna look like for that meeting? And what is, what is the layout of the meeting gonna be?
The layout of the meeting would be that we would continue with City Council deliberation.
Are we going to have, okay, we're gonna hear from staff, city staff, or the public?
No, we're gonna literally pick up where we left off, if, in fact, the council chooses that direction. So, you're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kassarag?
Well, I'll say for one, I'm up for staying here and hammering this out tonight. It's been a long time coming for all of us. I've put a lot of work into tonight. I'm absolutely, you know, fine with it either way, but I'm not giving up yet. And I just want to throw that out there. I'd also like to explore, do we have a busy agenda on March 1st?
I don't know yet.
To be determined, really, yeah.
So, I mean, I realize it's regularly scheduled meeting with regularly scheduled business that needs to happen, but can we maybe dedicate an hour to it? You know, it might be a little bit of a later night again. I'm okay with that.
There's still a motion on the floor to recommend March 8th that would require the motioner to withdraw his motion and/or amend that motion with a second or concurring.
Well, I think I'm commenting on the motion at hand, though, saying that...
You are, but you're suggesting, as I understand it, perhaps March 1 instead of March 8?
I'm just saying, in general, I want to keep this issue contemporary in our discussions, and would be fine with continuing the discussion, even on a regular scheduled night meeting, fitting all that business in, and dedicating some time to Emma's Landing on top of it. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm willing to stay here to button this down. I don't, I think we've, I think we've hit all of the major topics that have been brought up by the hundreds of emails and the public comments. I, I don't think, I think we can get this done tonight. I'd be in favor of getting, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Bergert?
I'm in favor of continuing this, continuing this motion in March 8th, when we have an empty calendar. Sounds good to me. Luckily, none of us are traveling too much anymore for work or pleasure. We will note that we need to be here on March 8th. I've been on this council long enough to know we rarely get better after 10:00 PM. And in fact, we often get nasty, and tired, and cranky with each other. I certainly would like some time to get some more questions answered that some of us have, and come back here fresh and ready to tackle it again then. This is a huge issue. This is a huge issue for our community, huge. And I think it deserves one, more than one, City Council meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else to the motion? Seeing no hands, anticipating no hands. On the motion to continue this meeting to Monday, March the 8th. The motion by Caven, the second by, I believe, Maladra.
Maladra.
Will now take the roll call. A simple majority is needed to accept.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarag?
Nay.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Bergert?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
The motion passes with seven affirmative votes, three nay votes, and nobody is absent. This meeting is being continued till, until, excuse me, Monday evening, March the 8th, 7:00 PM in this council chamber. We have new business and public comment.
You're right.
New business from the dais, ladies and gentlemen, or virtually. We do have an opportunity for public comment, irrespective of what that topic is. The public is invited to comment on any issue facing our community, or to bring to our attention any issue they'd like. Ms. Dawkins, is there anyone online who wishes to do so?
Well, through email, we've received one public comment since the last time from Marissa Genix, and four emails from Lindsay McCall, that all will be included in the record.
Mr. McCready?
No one is raising their hand at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, motion to adjourn is offered by Alderman Marx. Madam Recording Secretary, Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Bergert?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned until March the 8th. Be safe, everyone.